The top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty-seven hundred service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News and World Reports 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than four hundred sixty thousand students throughout California. With tuition of less than seven thousand dollars annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty seven hundred service members and veterans along with thirteen thousand dependents are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stools worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans, and occupied three others in the top ten. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than four hundred sixty thousand students throughout California. With tuition of less than seven thousand dollars annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty seven hundred service members and veterans along with thirteen thousand dependents are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stools worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans, and occupied three others in the top ten. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than four hundred sixty thousand students throughout California. With tuition of less than seven thousand dollars annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty seven hundred service members and veterans along with thirteen thousand dependents are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stools worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans, and occupied three others in the top ten. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than four hundred sixty thousand students throughout California. With tuition of less than seven thousand dollars annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty seven hundred service members and veterans along with thirteen thousand dependents are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stools worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans, and occupied three others in the top ten. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than four hundred sixty thousand students throughout California. With tuition of less than seven thousand dollars annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty seven hundred service members and veterans along with thirteen thousand dependents are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stools worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans, and occupied three others in the top ten. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than four hundred sixty thousand students throughout California. With tuition of less than seven thousand dollars annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty seven hundred service members and veterans along with thirteen thousand dependents are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stools worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans, and occupied three others in the top ten. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than four hundred sixty thousand students throughout California. With tuition of less than seven thousand dollars annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty seven hundred service members and veterans along with thirteen thousand dependents are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stools worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans, and occupied three others in the top ten. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than four hundred sixty thousand students throughout California. With tuition of less than seven thousand dollars annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty seven hundred service members and veterans along with thirteen thousand dependents are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stools worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans, and occupied three others in the top ten. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than four hundred sixty thousand students throughout California. With tuition of less than seven thousand dollars annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty seven hundred service members and veterans along with thirteen thousand dependents are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stools worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans, and occupied three others in the top ten. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than four hundred sixty thousand students throughout California. With tuition of less than seven thousand dollars annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. Sixty seven hundred service members and veterans along with thirteen thousand dependents are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the livestream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU--
Please come to order. Good afternoon. At this time, the November 2025 meeting of the CSU Board of Trustees is called to order. Ms. Coral, please call the roll.
Trustee Adamson.
Here.
Trustee Arambula.
Here.
Trustee Braar.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Fajardo.
Present.
Trustee Fristenberg.
Here.
Trustee Fong.
Here.
Chancellor Garcia.
Here.
Trustee Gilarducci.
I'm here.
Trustee Gilbert Lurie.
Here.
Trustee Wajardo.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis. Trustee Lopez.
Here.
Trustee McGrawry.
Here.
Trustee Najabat. Governor Newsom. Speaker Rivas. Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Steinhouser.
Here.
Superintendent Thurmond. Trustee Vargas. Trustee Melacar.
Here.
Chair Clark, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Coral. To frame our meeting ahead, I'd like to begin our first highlight video from CSU Dominguez Hills, which perfectly illustrates the often life-changing journey to a CSU degree. This particular journey leads us deep into the heart of the Yucatan jungle. Please roll the video.
We are currently in the Yucatan jungle, working on an archaeological excavation at a site called Chanobchak. My time at the Anthropology 313 class was a great starter point for an excavation, but when you're out here in the jungle and all its elements, you're not really prepared until you get there.
My students and I are studying the origins of settled life in the Puuk region of Yucatan, Mexico. We've been excavating in the ball court at the site of Chanobchak, a really small site, just completely surrounded by forest, in the middle of the Puuk jungle. We started excavating in the side of the ball court last week, and over the course of these last five, six days, bit by bit, slowly, we've worked our way down, noting every little change that we see in the architecture of the feature of the ball court. Taking away the layers of this collapse of a building, we're able to see the construction sequence. So we've recovered a lot of ceramics, which is what we were looking for in the first place, but we actually got the bonus of figuring out the construction history of this ball court at the site of Chanobchak.
The highlight of my trip thus far has been finding Mayan offering at the temple, so that's a pretty big thing within itself. It's the first found ever in the Yucatan region. It's important because it really pieces together the past and the future. That really just confirms that people were over this land longer than we expected them to.
One of the really amazing things with this program in particular is that the students who come down to do research with me here in Yucatan are developing their own study projects. They're doing their own independent research. We met ahead of time, did some prep, but they developed their own ideas, their own questions that they wanted to address with their field research. There's one student who's working on photogrammetry, which is 3D modeling, in this case of artifacts and architectural features at the archaeological site. So for photogrammetry, what you do is you take tons of photos of different artifacts or features, and then you use a digital modeling program to stitch them all together, and you get a 3D digital model of that artifact or that feature. And that's what he's focusing on right now with his research.
Being able to access photogrammetry remotely is important because for an object to be researched, it would take people or time and space for people to examine it and have like the space to study it, but having it in a virtual space, it will be easily accessible.
They're really the ones that are spurring these projects. They're doing them. And to have the opportunity to come do research in another country with partners from Mexico and partners from across different universities and colleges, that's really an opportunity that DH can offer them that not other places can.
Whoa. What a wonderful experience. Our thanks go to the Toros at CSU Dominguez Hills, responsible for this beautiful video, and our deep gratitude goes to Dr. Seligson, who's guiding his students not only to unearth ancient secrets, but also discover their strengths, talents, and career paths. Well done, well done indeed. And with that, we now proceed to public comment. In our continuing effort to provide accessibility and flexibility for the public, we invite all public comment for communities, committees, excuse me, and plenary now at the beginning of our open session. The board welcomes public comment and appreciates all the speakers who've taken time to attend this meeting, both in person and virtually. And I want to emphasize that the board's role during these sessions is to carefully listen and consider each and every comment. It's not to respond or interact with members of the public. However, please know it would be a mistake to interpret our silence as a lack of engagement. To the contrary, as Chair of the Board, I can assure you, not only we hear your perspectives and we appreciate your insights, they inform our work both inside and outside of this chamber. As always, university presidents are seated around the dais, so they may better see and hear our public speakers as they address some of the CSU's most critically important matters. When public comment has concluded, the presidents will return to the usual seats. In the spirit of fairness to all who wish to speak and to allow the committees and the board to hear from as many speakers as possible within the time available, please note that seating, pooling, or yielding time to other speakers will not be permitted. I also ask that all speakers please keep their remarks concise. Each speaker will have one minute for their comments. At the CSU, we uphold constitutional protections and view the right to free expression and open discourse as essential hallmarks of higher education. However, we ask that all who attend our board meetings conduct themselves in a respectful manner, and one that does not disrupt or infringe upon the free speech or safety of others, and that allows for the orderly conduct of this meeting. As a continued reminder, in addition to participating in public comment sessions, any member of the public may also submit written remarks to be shared with the board via email, trusteesoffice@calstate.edu. CSU stakeholders may also share their feedback with respective system-wide bodies, the Cal State Student Association, statewide academic senate, and Alumni Council. Each provides standing reports at every board meeting. I now turn over Ms. Coral to please call the speakers who have requested to provide public comment. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Clark, and good morning, everyone, or good afternoon. If you are in person to provide public comment, please step to the microphones on either side of the auditorium when you hear your name. If you're on Zoom, once you hear your name, please accept the unmute request to begin your comments. Please remember that each speaker will have one minute to share their comments. If in person, a red light will show at the podium when one minute has passed. If virtual, a timer will be present on your screen. A reminder will be given at the one-minute mark to please conclude your remarks before we proceed to the next speaker to allow for as many people as possible to provide their comments. Our first speakers are Bethany Price, Jessica Dalton, and Don Moreno.
Please turn on your microphone. Oh, no, the red light, there you go.
Thank you. I'll start again. Partial steps implementation is inequitable and unfair. Your decision to implement partial steps rather than full steps implementation is having a devastating effect and impact on staff morale and loyalty to CSU. With partial steps, the pay increases are based solely on how close or how far our current salaries are from the next step above. So some staff members like me, where our current salary is, received a raise of almost $100 a month, while other coworkers of mine, sitting right next to me, got $6 or $8, or some of my friends got none at all because their current salary was on a step that was designated as the next step up. Not sure how that works. This is completely arbitrary, inequitable, and unfair. With this decision, you rob me and longtime staff members like me of thousands of dollars in this year alone. We are the lowest wage workers in our system. The impact of your decision is cruel, it's random, and guaranteed to demoralize. And I will wrap up, but I promised 60 seconds, and I'm going to do my best to sort of keep that promise. You promised full salary steps. Do better. Your promise impacts way more people than mine does.
Good afternoon, my name's Jessica Dalton. I'm the CSUEU Vice President for Representation. CSUEU members marshaled all our resources this year to advocate with the legislature for full funding for the CSU. And let me state for the public record, we were highly effective and successful. Despite what administration says, there were no budget cuts to the university system. The CSU received a one-year funding deferral, and the state also offered a zero-interest loan of $144 million to cover that deferral. If Chancellor Garcia truly believes what she tells CSU employees, that quote, "Your work is essential to our mission," end quote, then the administration must use the state loan money to fully implement the salary structure you committed to in your contracts with staff. Our CSUEU bargaining team and our collective membership reject your proposal for a one-time 3% bonus payment as entirely insufficient and inadequate. We call on the administration to use the state loan to move us closer to the full steps promise you made to your employees.
Our next speakers will be Andrea Skinner, Steve Roddy, and Alex Martin. Andrea, please accept the unmute request.
I'm Andrea Skinner. I work at Cal State Channel Islands, and I'm a member of the Academic Programs Planning Department. Chancellor Garcia opened the Fall Academy here with an enthusiastic bimonthly newsletter to our campus communities with some great news. The chancellor shared that all the CSUs made the list of best colleges in America in Money Magazine. This is indeed wonderful bragging rights, especially that one factor in the ranking is social mobility of CSU alumni. If only our CSU workforce could also participate in the social and economic mobility that we work so hard to promote for our students, we actually don't. We reject your 3% bonus offer. That was mean, that was meant to keep us quiet and go with the status quo. We will not back down. We demand fair pay and full-step implementation now.
Alex, please accept the unmute request.
Hello, my name is Alex Martin. I'm a Biology TA from Sonoma State and a member of UAW 4123. I wanted to talk today about paid sick leave for the 6,000 hourly instructional student systems across the CSU. You know, this is a legal right that nearly every employer in California is legally entitled to provide, yet the CSU, which is one of the largest university systems in the US, doesn't consider itself subject to these rules. As the COVID-19 pandemic, which I'm sure we all remember, you know, shows, paid sick leave is a really important public health issue. No worker should have to decide between coming into work sick and potentially risking the health of their coworkers and paying rent or bills. You know, that shouldn't be have to be a decision anyone needs to make. Our union is currently in contract negotiations, and CSU management is proposing to delay the implementation of paid sick leave for ISAs for nearly two years. That's not good enough. If private sector employers can figure this out, so can you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Tessie Reese, Dawn McCully, and Rachel Hart.
Good afternoon, I'm Tessie Reese, Unit 2 Chair, House Support, from San Diego State. I'm an LVN and have been there since 1997. We need this administration to fund the full implementation of steps to keep healthcare and athletic support professionals at the CSU. We're losing talented and dedicated individuals who lead for better-paid jobs, positions that can have a decent quality of life. Community colleges and the UCs have implemented the minimum salary exempt, which is presently at $68,000 a year, especially for athletic trainers. We have seen them exit at the CSU for this salary. The CSU has refused to implement this. Community colleges, but for the CSU administration, refuse to do the same. CSU healthcare professionals have stuck it out and worked under a stagnant salary system structure for way too long. It is time for you to keep your promise that you signed the agreement to fully implement steps. Now is the time to do this.
Good afternoon, Chancellor, Trustees, Presidents, and guests. My name is Dawn McCully, and I am the Chair for Bargaining Unit 7 of the California State University Employees Union and a dedicated CSU employee for the past 30 years. I am here to speak about the broken compensation system for our CSUEU-represented staff. The CSU markets careers and commits, and I quote, "All positions at the CSU offer competitive compensation and benefits, a supportive working environment, and the chance to advance professionally." Yet for staff, this is far from the reality. Currently, about 5,500 CSUEU-represented employees are not being paid competitively. In technical terms, they are not on their target salary step. Instead, the CSU is offering one-time, non-pensionable payments that do nothing to close this gap and leave staff no closer to market or their rightful step than they were a year ago. This is not solely a matter for CSU management. As trustees, please remember this every time you vote to increase executive salaries. Staff are promised the same competitive compensation, but they are not receiving it. I ask you to fully fund the staff step system and advocate with the state legislature to ensure employees receive the structured, sustainable, and market-competitive compensation that you publicly advertised. Put your words into action and make the CSU the institution it claims to be.
Our next speakers will be Jessica Block-Narin, Zoe Bozich, and Eric Phipps.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
We can, go ahead.
Okay, fantastic. Hello, and thank you for having me. My name is Jessica Block-Narin, and I'm the only faculty fellow for disability inclusion across the entire Cal State system. I'm appointed by special assignment on my home campus of Cal State San Bernardino, which I consider a thought leader in disability-affirming practices. A goal of mine this year is to talk at every single board meeting of the year for the trustees. So despite being on bereavement currently, I'm still here giving public comment to all of you because of how critically important I think it is to speak on this topic. I'm here to talk about categorical funding for disability inclusion-related offices, including but not limited to the Disabled Student Services, which go by different names at each of our campuses. They need to be categorically funded. I've seen staffing fluctuate and funding fluctuate greatly during my extended tenure collaborating with our home office. There are times that lines go canceled or unfilled, all of which makes a big difference on our campus, which serves over 2,000 registered students with disabilities. When there is less staff and less funding, there are less disability-related civil rights fulfilled. When there is less disability civil rights, there is less disability justice. As the late Martin Luther King said, injustice-- As the late Martin Luther King said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." I kindly ask the trustees to please consider the grave potential injustice the lack of categorical funding creates, and to consider creating categorical funding for accommodations at offices across the Cal State. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Zoe Bozic. I'm a graduate student at San Diego State University, and I work as both a TA and ISA. And I am a member of UAW 4123. I work in the astronomy department at San Diego State University. And as a small department, all of our graduate students share offices and work in very close proximity to each other every day. So if one of us gets sick, we are all at risk. Instructional student assistants who do not get paid sick leave are forced to either work while sick, which puts their coworkers and students at risk, or stay home without pay and risk being unable to afford rent. My union is in contract negotiations now. It is imperative that the CSU implement ISA sick leave immediately to protect the health of our workers as well as the students they support. Thank you for your time.
Please go ahead, Eric.
Hello. My name is Eric Phipps, and I'm a grad student working as an ISA at CSU Los Angeles. And I'm a proud member of UAW 4123. As a CSU student worker, I've committed to serving my campus community as a tutor. And I've seen the immense impact that our work has during the busiest weeks on campus, midterms, finals, et cetera. My fellow ISAs and I in the tutoring center have been forced by the CSU to choose between losing our income or to come into work with an illness. Paid sick leave is a public health concern, and we deserve this fundamental right to be human because human beings get sick. After the fires in LA, I had a respiratory illness for four weeks, and I had to miss work, and I'm still recovering from this financially. We refuse the narrative that we should lose our income due to falling sick. The CSU can do better. And my union is bargaining for a new contract. Instructional student assistants deserve the dignity that a safe and healthy workplace provides, and encourage the CSU administration to agree to our proposals that will accomplish that.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Sang Kil, Maria Peinado, and Ryan Witt.
Check. All right. Hello, CSU Board of Trustees. My name is Sang Kil, and my comments are as an individual and not as a representative of SJSU or CFA. My understanding is I'm the first full-tenured professor in the USA to be fired for Palestine speech at San Jose State University. I've come to address Governor Gavin Newsom specifically. You recently committed what I see as a blue MAGA maneuver. You signed AB 715 into law, which would shield genocide and Zionism from critical teaching in K-12 classrooms, conflating anti-Zionism with antisemitism. This collaborates with MAGA manias decimating attacks in our higher education industry. Recently, CSULA gave up personal employee info to the EEOC in collaboration with this line of attack on higher education. My termination is part of this conflation of anti-Zionism with antisemitism at SJSU, and I hold CSU, SJSU, and this board responsible for this political targeting of free speech and academic freedom in education. You all are now jumping on the Trump train to erode the education system of academic freedom and living wage dignity. And I'll continue the fight for free speech, academic freedom, tenure, faculty right of co-governance, and justice for Palestine. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Buenos dias, CSU trustees and Chancellor Garcia. My name is Maria Peinado. Today, I'm speaking for the rights, equity, and dignity of graduate students with disabilities at CSU San Marcos. The history department chair and faculty bully students through humiliation, belittle student intelligence abilities and accomplishments, and staff choose to do nothing. This abuse of power creates a hostile academic environment. The VP of Student Affairs, Assistant VP of Title IX, College of Humanities Dean, Disability Support Services, graduate studies know what is happening and refuse to investigate. This situation is unacceptable, and I'm not afraid to name it. Chancellor Garcia, students with disabilities contribute immense value to our society, and you serve to be treated with the highest level of dignity and respect while pursuing academic success. All professors at San Marcos who intentionally harm, discriminate, and bully students must be held accountable. Emotional abuse has long-term results. Students, we see you, we support you. Never, ever give up. CSU San Marcos have the courage to do better and stop harming our students. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Witt, and I'm with Students for Justice in Palestine and Students for Quality Education at Channel Islands. The Board of Trustees has been retaliating against peaceful, pro-Palestine students and faculty at the behest of the fascist Trump administration. The EEOC launched a bogus antisemitism probe into the CSU in an attempt to silence the divestment movement. As an anti-Zionist Jewish student, I am disgusted at the conflation of antisemitism with anti-Zionism. Shamefully, CSU admin have jeopardized the safety of their workers by sending the personal information of all CSULA staff members to a regime that uses the threat of deportation to silence criticism for their genocide in Palestine. Most recently, three students at CSUN have been facing police brutality and unjust criminal charges for participation in a peaceful pro-Palestine protest. This is all in light of the Board of Trustees rescinding the free speech rights of students with the oppressive time, place, and manner policy created in direct response to the Palestine solidarity encampments. We demand the abolition of repressive time, place, and manner policies, the dropping of charges against the three peaceful CSUN students, and an end to CSU collaboration with Trump's fascist regime. The threats against pro-Palestine students and faculty will not work. We will not be intimidated, and we will not stop until the CSU divests from Israel's genocide in Palestine.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Katrina Hill, Vang Vang, and Danielle Proctor.
Good afternoon. My name is Katrina Hill, and I am a graduate student at CSU Northridge. I work as a TA and a GA for the psychology department, and I'm a proud member of the UAW 4123. As a former instructional student assistant myself, I can speak directly to how important paid sick leave is since I deal with chronic migraines. These often hit without warning, and I needed paid sick leave when I was an ISA. I am now a TA and a GA, and I've, even though I am afforded paid sick leave, I work alongside my ISA coworkers who do not have this basic right. When my fellow ISAs are still sick, they still have to come to work, so they do not lose income. Paid sick leave is an overall public health concern, and it's what keeps our workplaces safe. Currently, my union, UAW 4123, is in contract negotiations, and they are currently proposing, the CSU is currently proposing to delay the implementation of paid sick leave by two years. I encourage the Board of Trustees to agree to our proposals to accomplish paid sick leave now. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Vang Vang, librarian at Fresno State and CFA treasurer. Thank you for taking the 0% loan. However, tying it too directly to our union's demands for fair compensation is hitting below the belt. This academic year is my 27th year with the CSU. I am very thankful for my job, a job that I still very much enjoy. I am thankful for being able to feed and provide a home for my family. I am thankful for my union, my friends and colleagues, and I am very thankful for my health. But I am not thankful for you not doing what is right. Please invest the loan into instruction, into classes and programs, and into restoring jobs you cut because you said the CSU has no money. Yet you're spending millions of dollars on new buildings, and now you are pondering whether to eliminate the 10% caps on executive salary increases so you can pay the wealthiest administrators even more money. No money, huh? Chancellor Garcia, let the bargaining table be the space where we discuss faculty salaries. Don't cheat us by flattering us with a one-time compensation. Thank you.
Danielle, please accept the unmute request and begin your comment.
Hi, everyone. My name is Danielle. I am a graduate student. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, cool. Sorry, the time to go. I'm a graduate student at San Diego State University, currently working as a TA for the city planning department and a member of UAW 4123. We're currently trying to get paid sick leave for the over 6,000 hourly workers at the CSU's. Student workers deserve basic rights as other workers, such as sick time. It's cold and flu season, and COVID is still common throughout our communities, and student workers deserve the same rights of not having to go in to get sick or paying their bills. SDSU has really kind of drilled into our brain rightfully the idea of equity, and I would just really love to see the board look as paid sick leave as an equitable act. My union also is currently in contract negotiations, and we really encourage the Board of Trustees to agree to our proposals to accomplish that.
Our next speakers are Margarita Berta Avila, Ali Tweeny, and Melinda Dodge.
My name is Margarita Berta Avila, president of the California Faculty Association. I want to highlight a pattern visible to all and that there is no intention by the chancellor or the trustees to do right by the workers or students of the CSU. Sonoma State, for example, we fought hard to ensure funding for a lasting turnaround plan, but the chancellor and the interim president had a different agenda. We had to ask pro-tem Mike McGuire to write a letter reminding them not to misuse the money. The 0% loan, we stated clearly, use the loan to rescind the premature cuts or to fund our union siblings. Instead, the offer is a one-time compensation that adds no value to our base pay. Third, you sold out your employees. At Cal State LA especially, you handed information to the federal government, and no matter how you spin it, cooperation is capitulation. Just this morning, you held a closed session to discuss pay increases for the wealthiest CSU executives. This is no different than Trump's construction of a new ballroom while working people were unable to provide for their families during the shutdown. You have folk at Cal State LA who right now are living in their cars, and the library is debilitating.
Please conclude your comment.
If you can't be the conscience of the CSU, then we will be the consciences of CSU. And as Mayor Mendabi said from New York, "You try to get to one of us, you'll have to get through all of us."
Good afternoon. My name is Reverend Wally Hager, and I'm the Associate Minister of First Congregational Church of Long Beach. I also represent hundreds of faith leaders connected with CLU, Clergy and Laity United for Economic Justice, who stand in solidarity with CSU employees. Two months ago, I spoke at this very meeting to urge you to honor the wage increase that has already been agreed upon and to implement stronger immigration protection protocols. Since then, I've listened to comment after comment making the same plea. I've watched hundreds of employees gather, sharing their stories and emphasizing the urgency and importance of these issues. You can literally hear them right now outside. And that's why I'm deeply concerned to hear that you're considering wage increases for executives while no meaningful action has been taken to meet the real needs of CSU employees first. Words of support do not mean anything without concrete action. And I understand that you carry many competing pressures and responsibilities, but these employees are the life force of your institutions. When they thrive, CSU system thrives. I urge you to honor your commitments, deliver on your promise to your employees immediately. Thank you.
Timster, we represent 1,200 members. I'm sure you can hear them outside. If you can't hear exactly what they're saying, they say, "CSU, you're no good. Treat your workers like you should." And "CSU, you can hide. We can see your greedy side." With that, I want to say congratulations to the chancellors, vice chancellors, and the presidents of giving themselves 25%. Can you hear that? 25%. 10% base and 15% bonus. And they also removed the caps, if you didn't hear that. So shame on you for doing this. I also want to make sure to acknowledge people who is here. Acknowledge CLU. Thank you for being here to amplify the voices of community. And there is a leader here, Dr. Malina Abdullah from Black Lives Matter, who's always been a fighter for justice and a catalyst for change. She is here to tell you, as we all tell you, keep your commitment, honor your promise, because we will not settle for something less than what our members deserve and desired. These are negotiated contracts written and should be honored and acknowledged. Don't pay yourself. Pay the workers that they do the work.
Our next speakers will be F. Ayrton Flaherty, Yanelli Bazan, and Jasmine Jones. Ayrton, please accept the unmute request.
Thank you, Board. My name is Frank Ayrton Flaherty. As a Cal State San Marcos undergrad student, I strongly urge you to divest from OpenAI due to its many negative side effects to our society, one being its impact on education. Teachers and university faculty overwhelmingly do not want AI in their classrooms due to its impact on students' research and critical thinking skills. The availability of Google Search in smartphones already has impacts on student memory and critical thinking skills, but AI does the thinking for the users and does them a major disservice. Instead of teaching them how to research, OpenAI incentivizes students to plagiarize, and as AI improves, it will be harder for professors to catch all of it. On top of the fact that we've seen major cuts to academic departments and staffing throughout the CSU system, this expensive software investment does nothing to provide students with skills in the future academic or professional endeavors, but rather only hurts them. Please stop funding AI and fund resources that university faculty actually need, and stop incentivizing cheating in our education system. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Yashlov Fedotov, Steve Phillips, and Abigail Lopez.
Hello, everybody. I'm glad our president from our university, Sonoma State, is here so she can confirm what happened. On October 11, we had a horrible situation at Sonoma State. Saturday night, level of chlorine in the water was at an unprecedented dangerous level, jeopardizing life of the students. You can say it. Few people from Timster showed up trying to deal with that situation Saturday night. We could easily walk away. We could easily say, you know what? It's not our problem. It's a Saturday night, rainy, drizzling day, cold as hell. And yet, we dealt there with that situation, trying to save the life of the students, till 1:00 in the morning and following Sunday, few of us. And not to be able to recognize it with a few dollars. Come on, give me a break. We're not asking for $10 million bonus each and every one of like NFL players. We just ask what's in the contract. It's shameful. Thank you. And our president can confirm what happened.
I'm Steve Phillips from Chico State, and I made this trip again because the chancellor doesn't seem to get it, that we don't want a simple one-time check as a bribe to be quiet and get back to work. So today, I want to challenge the presidents of the campuses here today. I know none of you worry much about rent and the price of food and such. The basic cost of living is not a burden you share. But when you see us around on campus, think about that and how it's becoming more difficult day by day. Perhaps then you can start to support us, your staff and faculty, and put pressure on the chancellor to make the changes necessary to keep us financially afloat. Or will you cave to her pressure and influence and turn your back on us, the very people who truly make these campuses run? You may say, oh, we don't get involved in negotiations, but I'm telling you, your silence speaks volumes to us. Because when we shut your campuses down, perhaps then you will turn around and recognize our collective power instead of submitting to her. I'll close with Lenin. Yes, we have indeed lost all patience waiting for the blessed time long promised to us by diverse conciliators when the economists will have stopped charging the workers with their own backwardness and just... charging the workers with their own backwardness and justifying their own lack of energy with allegations that the workers lack strength. We have strength, and we are ready to show it.
Good afternoon. My name is Abigail Lopez, and I'm a student at CSU Northridge, double majoring in Public Health and Asian American Studies with SQE. I am here to demand the Board of Trustees and Erica Beck to drop the charges against the three students arrested at CSUN after the October 7 protest. The pro-Palestine protest was a peaceful one until an off-campus, repeated Zionist agitator began harassing students. It was CSUN UPD's responsibility to protect our students, and to no surprise, they did not hesitate to attack and silence our students, arresting them. Students walking out of class, and you think it's okay to just take them out? That's not okay. The lack of CSUN admin and UPD accountability is shameful, placing systemic failures onto our students. The repression of student voices through a militarized police presence harms all students that you claim to be protecting, uplifting all of these students that have been systemically underserved, and you think that's okay to do? It's not. This harms all everyone and puts the blood of wrongfully criminalized students on your hands. I simply ask of you to engage in humanity, knock cuffs, and drop the charges against the three students. Be human about it. Look at the people around you, and you think it's okay to keep harming us. Thank you for your time, and please consider yourselves to be human as well.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Justin Gans and Sarah Brady. Justin, go ahead and accept the unmute request.
Hello, my name is Justin Gans, and I'm an undergraduate student worker at Cal State San Marcos and a proud CSU Employees Union member. First of all, sick pay for student workers need to be implemented a year ago. The CSU is violating the law and putting our health and safety at risk. I'm also speaking on the recent contract with OpenAI that spends millions to force generative AI into our classrooms, despite concerns expressed by faculty, staff, and students. CSUSM students do not need ChatGPT in order to be career-ready. In fact, AI is causing worker exploitation, immense job loss, an impending economic crisis, and environmental devastation. Companies like OpenAI are also deeply complicit in AI surveillance tools that racially profile and target immigrants, as well as software developed for the indiscriminate slaughter of civilians, as we have seen with the genocide in Gaza. If our Board of Trustees has any care or concern for the interests of students and the workers who serve their education, it should not continue contracting with AI companies that surveil students, steal private information, and worsen their critical thinking skills. Lastly, Chancellor Garcia should step down for her failure to lead the CSU and for putting the interests of a bloated, overcompensated administration before the people she's supposed to serve.
Hello, my name is Sarah, and I am a student at Cal State San Marcos. The CSU recently signed a contract with OpenAI for $15 million. They claim that this will be good for students' education, but how can ChatGPT help students with their education when it gives fake information? ChatGPT is known to lie, give false information, and cite fake sources. Encouraging students to use a lie generator on their schoolwork shows that this is not about education. If it were, there are plenty of other ways that they could have spent $15 million that would help students' education much more. They've canceled classes and programs and let go of professors due to budget constraints, but they only want to invest in things like AI because they hope it can eventually replace teachers and give them more profit. But this is not the future that I, as a student, want to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Michelle Ramos Pellicia, Olympia Le Pointe, and Ryan Spencer.
Buenas tardes, Michelle Ramos Pellicia. And I am Professor at Cal State San Marcos and Vice President for the California Faculty Association. The racist attacks on our immigrant communities and kidnappings of community members are still happening. CSU students have fear and feel unsafe coming to our campuses because of the uncertainty of whether eyes will come to campus or near their loved ones and upend their lives. This causes great anxiety and fears with the ability to attend or engage in the classroom when their livelihoods are at risk. So I ask you, where is your commitment to protect the safety of our undocumented students, staff, and faculty? How is ASB 98 implemented across the CSU system? How much money and resources are being allocated to alert us if immigration enforcement authorities are present in our campuses? Such an alert system will help all of us feel somewhat safer. Instead of promising employees a one-time bonus with a 0% interest loan or giving executive raises, these funds should go to the creation and enhancement of an alert system and making sure the faculty
Please conclude your comment.
who are fired, one moment, are rehired, and that academic programs are not canceled. To the Chancellor and the Board of Trustees, be courageous and demonstrate how to be a leader in these horrific times. Do the right thing. Do the right thing and keep our community members safe.
Our next speakers will be Timothy Wanling and Vang Vang. Vang, go ahead and accept the unmute request. Our next speakers will be Tanya Berry, Kelsey Brown, and Karen Malone.
Hi, I've never spoken in front of people before, so please give me a little leeway in finishing what I have to say. I will be as fast as I can, but I might be a little slower than normal. So here I go. Hello, my name is Tanya Berry. I've worked for SDSU for 29 years, nearly three decades of dedication, loyalty, and hard work. I'm here to say, keep your word, fully implement steps, because behind every policy, every budget line, there are real people, people like me. After 29 years of service, my paycheck before taxes is $3,976 a month. After taxes, I take home $2,458.91. My rent is $2,047.49. That leaves me with $411. That's food, gas, bills, everything. And yes, that's after the so-called $54 step increase. Meanwhile, the lowest-paid person among leadership makes $314,900 a year. The highest makes $795,000 a year and gets a $95,000 housing allowance. Ten others get $60,000 for housing, another 10 have housing provided. Another three get $50,000 for housing. Let that sink in while many of us are choosing between rent and groceries and others having, are having, receiving more housing alone than people make an entire year. I'm standing here to say this is not right. People need a living wage. Steps need to be implemented now. How can you justify your salaries? How can you justify your housing allowance? I will be as, just, just give me a second. Allowance is when your employees are barely hanging on month to month. We are the ones who keep this university running. We are the heartbeat of SDSU. I'm not begging for money. I'm demanding a living wage. I'm demanding the respect that we have earned. 29 years, and I still have to fight for fairness. We deserve better. We deserve dignity. We deserve, we deserve respect, and we deserve a living wage. Thank you for listening to us.
My name is Kelsey Brown. I'm Specialist at Cal State LA. I've worked here nearly seven years, and I'm a proud CSU alum from Fullerton, San Diego, and now San Jose. Like so many of my coworkers, I love this system. We're CSU grads mostly and community members who keep our campuses running, but this love is not being returned. We bargained for over a year, and we're promised fully funded salary steps, real equity after decades of wage stagnation. Then, just months before implementation, the CSU broke that promise, claiming they couldn't afford it. My raise in October was $30 after seven years of hard work, and my story isn't unique. The vast number of your staff saw these minuscule raises, mostly because we were already so underpaid. When we went to the next highest step, the raise was almost negligible. If I had been placed on my proper step, my raise would have been $15,000. That's how inequitable our raise, our salaries are. We're $16,000 across the campuses, and we're bleeding talent because people cannot afford to stay. Keep this up, and the People's University will become the employer of last resort, a place that drives away talent, burns out the loyal, and shortchanges its students it claims to serve. You have the money. You made the promise. Honor it and fully fund steps now.
Back in the 1960s, under the California Master Plan, students paid small fees, not tuition, for higher education. Fast forward to today, the average tuition is $7,500 per year. If we're truly committed to quality instruction and retaining diverse and excellent faculty and staff, why are executive salaries surging while classrooms strain? In the 1970s, Chancellor Dumke earned about $65,000. If we were to adjust for cost of living and inflation, that salary today should be about $390,000. But Chancellor Garcia's base salary is $795,000, with total compensation reported at about $1.1 million. And campus presidents make between $450,000 and $700,000 in total compensation. So here's the ask. Align budgets with our mission. Prioritize classrooms over corner offices. Invest in the people who teach, advise, clean, code, and keep our campuses running. It's not the Chancellor and the Presidents keeping the CSU running. It's us. It's the staff, the faculty, and our salaries should reflect that.
Our next speakers will be Kenia Juarez, Chantel Paul, and Thomas Corrigan. Please go ahead.
My name is Thomas Corrigan. I'm a faculty member and CFA Chapter Vice President at Cal State San Bernardino, where our campus administration has been earning some very bad press. One recent San Bernardino Sun headline read, "Audit Finds Cal State San Bernardino Student Housing Program Deep in Debt." CSUSB's Student Housing Department has transferred $33 million in debt to the university since 2019, and it borrowed $10 million from the Student Union and Campus Operating Fund. The latter was impermissible under CSU policy. Another Desert Sun headline reads, "CSUSB Shuts Down Highly-Awaited Physician-Assistant Program." State and federal lawmakers secured $18 million for that desperately needed program, but it failed because accreditation, it failed accreditation because administrators didn't hire enough faculty and tried to pass off management personnel as faculty. Finally, a Riverside Record headline reads, "Jury Awards Former CSUSB Associate Dean $6 Million in Gender Discrimination Lawsuit." As the plaintiff's attorney explained, there were innumerable complaints of gender harassment made to innumerable officials over several years, and the institution did nothing. $67 million later, I ask, how have CSUSB's top administrators, directly implicated in each of these costly, embarrassing scandals, kept their jobs? Where's the accountability?
My name is Kenia Juarez. I'm a Human Development major at Cal State East Bay, a member of Students of Quality Education, and an EOP peer mentor. Today, I'm speaking about the budget cuts that are really impacting my campus. We're seeing important resources and programs being reduced, merged, or completely cut with no warning, and classes students need being closed or squeezed into one section. Every day, as an EOP peer mentor, I see students struggling because these cuts take away their guidance, community, and academic support, while campus presidents, top administrators, are getting, talking about their raises today, getting paid half a million dollars. Hello. Half a million dollars a year, receiving a 10% raise as we lose programs, lose classes, and even lose safe housing. And the fact that you choose to talk about that today, as every student who makes up the CSU system is feeling attacked, shows how disconnected with your priorities truly are. You say you're for the students, yet every action you take says otherwise. Students shouldn't have to fight for basic needs while our fees are going up and quality of education is under attack. Shame on you for choosing raises over student success. I call on the Board of Trustees and public leaders to restore funding, fully staff our programs, protect resources, student resources, and truly listen to us. We deserve real support, not empty promises, you guys do. Now, one more thing.
Please conclude your comment.
Erica, drop the charges on all those three students from Northridge. They do not deserve that treatment. Hands off us.
Our next speakers will be Lisa LaSalle, Jordan Fulham, and Barbara Gil Mayberry.
My name is Lisa LaSalle. I'm a professor at CSU Monterey Bay and a proud member of California Faculty Association. We serve our students in substandard classrooms and inadequate buildings. Although my colleagues secured a grant that could have served our mostly Latina student population and allowed us to remodel our classrooms, the federal government canceled those ongoing education grants and put our institution further in jeopardy. Using the 0% interest loan as compensation bonuses, like pats on the head, is not going to help. Instead, we need real changes. Use that loan to improve classrooms and leave salary decisions for the bargaining table. Just three years ago, CSU had a surplus of over $2 billion. Last year, there was $775 million set aside for reserves for economic uncertainty. Now that money is tied up in Wall Street investments, we shouldn't be helping private interest group profit. We should be addressing the many issues within the CSU, such as deferred maintenance. Let's restore our pride in the CSU so we can continue to improve the lives, the education, and the futures. Thank you.
Our next speakers will be Carrie Real, Tiffany Jones, and Christopher Rooney.
Can I speak? Good afternoon, most honorable trustees. I, Dr. Gil Mayberry, recently received checks with an attachment that said confidential and contained $500 of my earned PhD raise that has been missing from my checks for six years. The other $100,000, I'm sorry, the other $1,000 of my earned PhD raise is still missing. I am legitimate in requesting my PhD raise be added back into my salary officially, not confidentially, along with back pay that has been withheld from me based on the invidious claims of two administrators, a 2018 dean and a 2018 interim, interim vice president for academic affairs. I believe Pomona administrators need to demonstrate ethical leadership and money management rather than curry political favors that benefit only themselves. May God protect me from retaliation for speaking truth to power.
Good afternoon. My name is Tiffany Jones, and I'm a proud professor at CSU San Bernardino for 18 years. I've watched this system transform from a place of learning into a corporate business model that puts profit over people and money over students. Systemwide, the CSU pays over half a billion dollars a year in interest going to Wall Street, while classrooms crumble and programs are cut. And just this July, another billion dollars was borrowed, not for education, but for stadiums and vanity projects that you all approved through the system-wide revenue bond program. On my campus, CSU San Bernardino, we pay $18 million a year towards that debt and even made unauthorized transfers from our operating fund to cover it. The chief audit officer himself called it out. And now, even the $144 million no-interest state loan meant to support instruction is being hijacked for one-time bonuses instead of real pay increases or investments in our students. Enough. Just stop mortgaging our students' futures and burning out the educators who make this system possible. Put CSU, our students, and taxpayers' money back where it belongs, in the classroom.
Our next speakers will be Teresa Brooks, Nanette Schlonleber, Lida Ramos, and Lyora Feinsmith. Teresa, go ahead and unmute when you're ready. Teresa, go ahead and unmute when you're ready.
Oh, there we go. Sorry, it wasn't letting me unmute. I'm here. And of course, I get my turn when I have my mouth full of gummy bears. Hello, wake up, everybody paying attention? Everybody have their phone down? Professor's talking. Yes, so I'm here from Fresno State. I'm a lecturer in the Chemistry Department, and I would like to talk to you about what you care about: saving your own money. Like my colleague from CSU Monterey, I am embarrassed by the facilities that I teach in. Recently this year, our president put on a proud mini-video promotional video trying to encourage students to come to our humble university called Pride of the Valley. And what did he show? Football. Why? Because that's the only part of our campus that's worth showing off. I teach chemistry in labs that do not have an automatic gas shut-off. I teach chemistry in labs with a weird funky smell coming out of the sinks. That's probably a dead cat. What the hell? Students come transferring from our community college system, and they are grumbling to me about how their community college had such nice glassware, had such nice equipment. We are the CSU. We should be the pride of the state. Why are we so poorly underfunded? So don't give me some piddly little one-time raise that I'm going to probably just buy myself a new sofa. I don't need a new sofa. I need working chemistry equipment. If you don't want to get sued by students having health and safety accidents, then invest in our infrastructure.
Leora, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Leora, a senior Jewish student at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. I'm on Cal Poly's antisemitism task force, Slow Hillel's Board, and Hillel International's Leadership Network as the CSU trustee. I stand before you today to ask you to improve the CSUs by further addressing antisemitism. Thank you for enforcing the time, place, mannered rules consistently and neutrally within the CSU system. It has helped me feel safer as a student while still being able to express my First Amendment rights. Also, thank you for partnering with institutions to help combat antisemitism, and trustee members for showing support. Despite this progress, antisemitism still persists on campus. Distortions of definitions related to Judaism cause harmful misconceptions and leave many Jewish students feeling isolated and alienated. To reduce future antisemitism in the CSUs, I recommend that you enact the following: One, mandatory antisemitism training for all CSU students, faculty, and staff. Two, a CSU-wide definition of antisemitism so every campus has clarity and consistency. Three, a system-wide and campus-level antisemitism task forces that include Jewish student voices for participation in Hillel International's Campus Climate Initiative, or CCI, on all CSU campuses to ensure administrators receive proper education and support. And please reach out and use me as a resource. I am happy to help and appreciate all that you do for the CSU system. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Spencer Owen and Carlos Lara Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, Chancellor, trustees. My name is Spencer Owen. I'm a proud Teamster from Local 2010. I'd just like to say shame on you for offering us a lump sum instead of our step raises that we so deserve. I'm just so glad we're an impasse because it just makes it so much easier for us to strike. And we're going to shut you down. It's going to be so much fun. Thank you.
Our next speakers will be Patricia Sanchez, Dennis Sotomayor, and Rebecca Nowicki.
My name is Patricia Sanchez, and I'm a proud Teamster, a facility maintenance mechanic, a woman in the trades, and a single mother fighting for fairness. Our contract promised raises and step increases. We keep our commitment to CSU every single day. We show up, we work hard, and we keep these campuses running. However, CSU has not kept its commitment to us. As a woman in the trades, I've spent years providing a work of a field where we're often overlooked. As a single mother, I work two jobs and I run a side business just to keep my household afloat. Every decision you make directly affects the ability to support my family. These raises are not a bonus. They are part of a legal binding agreement. I appreciate the opportunity a CSU has given me to be a part of this community. I love my job and I take pride in the work I do every day. However, loving my job does that mean staying silent when promises are broken? We are prepared to stand up for what is right because our livelihoods and our family depends on it. I am asking you to honor our contract to the right to the workers and keep CSU standing. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, board members, Chancellor Garcia, presidents, thank you for your time. I also want to thank all the members of the union coalition that are here today, standing in solidarity. You hear them outside? Get used to that, because that's what's coming to a campus near you. We, in all my conversations with the members on my campus, they're done talking. They want action. They're demanding action. And they are ready to shut you down. It's a shame that there are raises for individuals in this collective here, in this board, but not to bring people to the right place in their careers. I have 26 years with Cal State LA. Inversion does exist. People get hired today making more money than I do. I'm not mad at them. I'm mad for you guys not doing your job and setting things straight. Get it right, get us paid the way that we deserve to be, and then we can move on to educate and be better in our campuses. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Jorge Martinez, Akila Ananth, and Antonio Gallo.
Here we are again, and I will keep coming back to speak because this matters for all of us. My name is Jorge Martinez, a union leader and steward with Teamsters 2010 and a proud plumber at Cal State LA. SB 640's Direct Admissions Program is moving forward at 16 of 22 campuses, bringing in more students and increasing CSU's tuition revenue. Along with the $144 million 0% loan, CSU is on track to meet commitments already made and ratified contracts with the Teamsters and other unions. More students mean more faculty, classes, staff, and services. But we're being asked to stretch limited resources even thinner. This cannot continue. Our students, workers, and campuses deserve better. I have a question for you, Mildred and trustees. Are you ready? Because the Teamsters are. We have the backing of over 1.3 million Teamster members. When we say shut it down, we mean it. Thank you.
Our next speakers will be... Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Antonio Gallo, CFA, Chicano Chicano Studies at Cal State Northridge. I'm part of the Immigration Task Force for CFA. We need to make sure that we protect our students and our staff from all these raids that are going on. We've been hearing rumors that immigration officers are going to be attending our campus. We need to make sure that does not happen. If it happens, you are going to harm our students, and you're going to harm the future of the CSU, and you're going to harm the future of California. So we need to make sure that you protect our students, you protect our staff, and you all follow the state laws that prohibit immigration officers from coming into our campuses. It is important that our students feel safe. It is important that our parents of the students feel safe. It is important that our faculty feel safe. So prevent that from happening, please.
Our next speakers will be Fatima Ikbal Zubair, Robert St. Pierre, and Jonathan Karpf. Our next speakers will be Letizia Terones and Eric Phipps. Our next speakers will be Lily House-Peters and Lisa Kawamura. Our next speakers will be Robert Pirrietti and Saif Mansour.
You got to give the disabled woman a second to get to the mic.
My apologies.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Kawamura, and I'm CFA's AVP for Chapter Presidents in the North and a full-time temporary lecturer in my 28th year at Cal Poly Slow. Chancellor Garcia, you made a great decision to accept the 0% loan. I want to congratulate you on that. However, the offers you have made toward our sibling unions are offensive and disrespectful. You promised them step increases, and you did not come true to that. You've ignored the most basic and honest treatment of your staff unions all while you hand out generous executive compensation. And I know that you all work really hard. So do we. Many of our workers live in poverty. None of you do. Respect faculty and students. Use the loan money to reinstate the programs you prematurely cut. Rehire the faculty whom you let go due to non-availability of work and give the students the classes and programs that they deserve. Stop manufacturing austerity and the end cries of no money in the budget. We know that budgets are simply a tool of the oppressor, a way to claim you cannot afford to support the largest higher education system in the United States by selective budget analysis. California deserves better. Our faculty and students deserve better. Please do better.
Robert, please go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'm Robert Peretti from the College of Health and Human Services at Sacramento State. For over 70 years, Sacramento State has been a leader in community-based clinical education. The student impact of this is powerful. Each year, about 200 students from physical therapy and speech-language pathology and audiology gain hands-on experience serving more than 1,500 clients in on-campus clinics. Through our Mobile Health Initiative, we've now added nursing and social work reaching over 1,000 additional individuals last year with essential care and education in their communities. This is workforce development at its best and at the heart of the CSU mission. The benefits to faculty-student engagement are also many. Our faculty lead teams advancing evidence-based interprofessional practice, research, and mentorship in clinical education. The benefits to our community stand out. Our clinics provide accessible care to underserved populations while strengthening partnerships with local agencies, schools, and nonprofits through clinical instruction and advisory input. Going forward, we're expanding services, including adding hearing aid sales and medical support in the doctor-bodiology program. I invite you to seek more information about this timely and important work on our website and reach out with any questions about our model: csus.edu/hhs/chppr. Thank you.
Saif, please go ahead and accept the unmute request.
Thank you. My name is Saif Mansour, and I'm a senior majoring in biology at Sac State. I've been doing research for a little over a year now with Dr. Kelly McDonald, and our research aims to identify the barriers that students across the entire CSU system face and the benefits they gain from participating in undergraduate research. We believe this is important because there's plenty of data to suggest that students may struggle to access these undergraduate research experiences, but there is very little data that explores the challenges that students encounter during their research experiences. And so our research found that students experience a wide range of barriers during their research, and that includes confidence struggles, time constraints, and also financial barriers, which was the most reported barrier despite our sample being compensated for their work. On the positive side, students gain many benefits through participating in undergraduate research, such as gaining different technical skills, building strong relationships with mentors and peers, and developing a sense of science, identity, and belonging. On a personal note, I've reaped so many benefits throughout conducting undergraduate research, including improving my communication skills and feeling like a true scientist. We ask for an increase in funding for our undergraduate research experiences as it is crucial for reducing barriers, especially for underrepresented and low-income students, and ensuring all students can thrive in higher education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Emily Mahmoud and Andrew Reddish.
Good evening or good afternoon, CSU Board of Trustees. My name is Emily Mahmoud, and I'm here as an undergraduate student at Cal State San Marcos. I'm here to address the ChatGPT $17 million deal that was made. I just want to say that the CSU is a people-powered university and not an AI-powered institution. ChatGPT disproportionately impacts communities of color, leaving the pollution that goes into these black and brown communities. Additionally, ChatGPT surveillance is used in Israel to systematically target Palestinians. This is also creating disparities in our workers, in our workforce. 300,000 people will lose jobs by 2030 due to AI and ChatGPT. So to echo what everyone else has been saying in this meeting, meet the needs of the people. This is a people-powered institution. As you have heard by many people before, people are struggling. People need more resources, so we're asking you to reflect that. Reflect that you care about the people that you claim to serve and put the resources into the university, into your schools, into your programs, and not into these million-dollar deals with these institutions that already have power. Put the power into the people. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Andrew Reddish, and I am the Director of the WELL at Sacramento State, which is the campus recreation center. Over the past two years, we have partnered with architects, construction groups, and various campus departments, including facilities and athletics, to renovate and upgrade our recreation basketball court space. These upgrades include telescopic bleachers, state-of-the-art LED lighting, audio equipment, video scoreboards, court striping, and campus signage to create an exciting new recreation and athletic venue called Hornet Pavilion. This renovated space serves as the home court for our men's and women's basketball teams, which, by the way, in the first three games alone, which were all sellouts, generated more sponsor support and ticket sales than the last two seasons combined. When the space isn't being used for athletic competitions, attracting thousands of Hornets supporters from the campus and local community, the bleachers are pushed back in, hoops are lowered from the ceiling, and hundreds of campus recreation members, the majority of whom are students, are enjoying pickup basketball, pickleball, badminton volleyball, and organized intramural sports. We are proud of the collaboration at Sacramento State throughout this planning and construction process to not only create a dynamic and attractive sports venue for intercollegiate athletics, but also create a dynamic and attractive recreation environment that every student can utilize to reduce stress, make new friends, and pursue their fitness and movement goals while at Sacramento State. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Lauren Cannon, Maya Dosh, and Nicholas Dix.
Y'all ready? My name is Lauren Cannon. I'm a secretary of the CFA, and I'm a lecturer at Cal Poly Humboldt for 20 years. The CSU system is supposed to be for education for all, and you have made it about amassing wealth for the few. This is distributive injustice. It's a mal-distribution of California taxpayer funds. CSU executives pull in incomes close to that of the US president and much higher. Is this funding higher education? The argument here is that these astronomical salaries are required to get the best folks, yet faculty salaries are continually minimized. I guess people like me are a dime a dozen. Presidents and others have a housing allowance when students can't hope to ever even buy a house due to a tuition-based debt. Lectures like me take in numerous roommates or live in our cars to make ends meet. Classes are cut, dashing the dreams of students and impoverishing lectures so you can hoard more wealth in your so-called reserves. Make no mistake, this affluence, the salaries, the cars, the homes of upper management, require the impoverishment of workers. This affluence requires the continual precarity of half of the faculty of the CSU. We simply can't have it both ways. We can fund a higher education oligarchy, or we can support higher education for California students. We're at an inflection point. It becomes clear every day, the people of California can't afford you.
Our next speakers will be Alejandra Coronado and Rachel Robles.
Hello, my name is Alejandra, and I'm a Cal State San Marcos student. I want to begin by saying the names of four people who should still be alive today. Adam Rain, 16 years old; Zane Chamblin, 23; Amory Lacy, 17; Sophie Riley, 29. All four are students and young adults who turned to OpenAI for emotional support. All four were failed by it, and all four committed suicide after AI systems responded in ways that no responsible human being ever would. Our university recently paid over $15,000 for expanded access to the same system. Students are already using AI as therapists, but how is that safe if AI is not capable of recognizing real danger, calling 911, or alerting a single human when someone's life is at risk? College is supposed to empower us to think, to learn, to grow, not to out-thirst our minds, our mental health, to tools that have already been linked to preventable deaths. I'm urging you, Chancellor Garcia, from a place of genuine fear and care for our campus, please do not renew or expand our contracts with OpenAI. Prioritize us, protect us. We can replace a contract, but you can't replace a life. Chancellor Garcia, listen to your students. Power to the students. Act now or just step down. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rachel Joy Robles. I am a graduate student and TA at San Diego State University School of Communication and a proud member of UAW 4123. And San Diego State prides themselves on being at R1 status with research. I find it ironic that the CSU administration delays on providing instructional student assistance with sick leave. Not allowing ISA sick leave is a public health safety concern when our coworkers and students are at risk. All academic student workers deserve sick leave. My union, UAW 4123, is going into our fifth month of bargaining for a new contract. I would like to urge the CSU admin and Board of Trustees to take into consideration the needs of student workers on campus and agree to a fair contract that underlines the valuable contributions that we make to this university. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Molly Talcott and Rama Mayadi and Ronald Lowe.
Respected Chair and Board of Trustees, I am speaking against Agenda Item 9, the proposed executive compensation policy that removes the 10% cap on executive comp and increases the cap to unlimited, "sky is the limit", not-many-questions-asked type of policy, and makes the bonuses and pay hikes irresponsible. This expansion contradicts the system's own financial narrative made to the elected officials and the public. The CSU leadership attributes budget cuts and layoffs to a demographic cliff and a tsunami in student enrollment. If staff and faculty are facing tsunami and layoffs, then how can executives see sunshine and unlimited pay increases? Elected officials in Sacramento are surely watching this contradiction. If colleges nationwide are experiencing declines, there must be a large pool of qualified leaders who are looking for a job in California or unemployment. Paying them excessive salaries is unnecessary and can be construed as frivolous.
Good afternoon. My name is Ronald Lowe. I've been a professor of anthropology at California State University at Long Beach for 20 years and an American Jew for, well, 68 years now. I've been involved in the fight against antisemitism and racism for a long time. I know what antisemitism is, and I know what it's not. And I know that the Trump/EEOC investigation of antisemitism is not a legitimate investigation of antisemitism. It's an attempt to suppress free speech reminiscent of the McCarthy period. You don't have to have a PhD, Dr. Garcia, to figure this out. All you have to do is read the newspaper occasionally. Two courts have already pointed out that universities that have a little bit of backbone can easily rebuff this current attempt. American Association of University Professors versus Rubio, Judge Young upheld the First Amendment rights of immigrant students, noting that the government was,
Please conclude your comment.
using an elastic definition of antisemitism and was specifically targeting individuals for their personal beliefs. In Fellows of Harvard versus United States Department of Health, Burroughs wrote in his, "It is difficult to conclude anything other than the Trump administration using antisemitism"
Please conclude your comment.
I'm finishing up.
Thank you.
Contributed, "used antisemitism as a smokescreen for a targeted ideologically motivated assault on the country's premier institutions." Your decision to fully cooperate with the Trump administration, who are the real antisemites, is really a cynical manipulation of facts
So you're well over your minutes now.
to attack the First and Fourth Amendments of faculty at the CSU.
Our next speakers will be Joseph Taylor and Kira Sladen.
Today, I would like to speak in relation to the topic of the economic power of the CSU. I want to highlight some of the fantastic work being done by the Management, Information Systems, and Business Analytics Department in the College of Business at Sacramento State. This past year, the department has developed and recently received approval for a new concentration in our business management degree and a new minor, both focused on AI management. This curriculum trains students on the ethical, practical, and responsible application of AI to develop tools that workers can use in addressing real-world problems. The faculty had developed this curriculum through deep engagement with local technology leaders, which has also enhanced the department's relationships. This deep collaboration has brought in community donations of $60,000 in hardware and internet access points to our financially disadvantaged students in our college this semester. We celebrate the role of these donations in lessening the digital divide that our students face at this critical time in our university. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Teri Winant, Yesenia Fernandez, and Esperanza Ariola.
Hello, my name is Esperanza Ariola, and I'm a proud alumni of Chico State, and I'm a current graduate TA in English at Cal State San Bernardino. I'm a product of the CSU. My success here was only possible through the support of faculty who had the time to teach and space to care. That's why I wanted to teach here. But Chancellor Garcia, you and this board have made it brutally clear that you don't care about my working conditions, my students' futures, or the mission that brought me here. Class sizes explode while sections disappear. You've stretched faculty impossibly thin, and then you adopt AI without consulting educators who teach critical thinking and writing. I tell students to engage with their writing process while you hand them the tools to bypass that. These are profit-driven decisions dressed up as progress, and our students pay the price. We ask you to restore jobs, and instead, you propose one-time bonuses that undermine collective bargaining. As threats to academic freedom intensify nationally, the CSU should model resistance, and instead, you consolidate power and ignore faculty. Chancellor Garcia, you have faculty who are the reasons students like me survive and stay and eventually stand here wanting to give back. Stop making decisions about education without us. Use the loan as intended. Listen to faculty. Restore what makes the CSU worth believing in. Thank you.
Our next speakers will be Noah Kojokaru, Maya Girasi, and Sam Silva.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Hello, my name's Noah Kojokaru. I'm a graduate student in the Humanities Department at SF State and a member of UAW 4123. I'm here to emphasize that our ISAs need and deserve paid sick leave. Academic student workers already make unlivable wages, as it is, and are put under immense financial pressure by the rising cost of living matched with our stagnant wages. Without sick leave, student workers are financially coerced into risking their health and the health of their coworkers by coming into work under conditions that are not safe for anyone. No worker should be under threat of financial insecurity for prioritizing their health and safety and that of their community. It is absurd that the CSU doesn't consider itself subject to the same rules that every other private business in California has to follow. As student workers, we are going into our fifth month of bargaining for a new contract, and I would like to urge the CSU administration and the Board of Trustees to take into consideration the needs of the student workers on campus and agree to a fair contract that underlines the valuable contributions that we make to this university. Thank you.
Hello, Board of Trustees. My name is Azar Hirschberg. I'm a current undergraduate at Cal Poly Pomona and a former student trustee of the Ventura County Community College District. Today, I'm bringing up the topic of concern of antisemitism. I thank the board for its hard work has taken in combating antisemitism, but there's still so much that needs to happen. Unlike so many other CSUs, Pomona has an incredibly small Jewish population, but for the last four years, we have grown and built a strong, close community. But with the sharp rise in antisemitism after October 7th, it has threatened our existence. Despite our inherent students, despite our independent student-run Hillel making no political statement and only bringing up concerns of safety, we were targeted for merely existing and calls from other student organizations for us to disband. And though our campus administration was helpful, it wasn't enough and it left our student-run Hillel to combat antisemitism essentially alone on campus, a job it shouldn't have, and instead of letting us have our student experience. As such, I ask the board to implement a system-wide definition of antisemitism to be able to identify and stop antisemitism
Please conclude your comment.
from ambiguity. Thank you for your time.
Maya, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Maya Giraki, and I'm a senior at San Diego State University. I'm the vice president of Student Supporting Israel Club and a proud member of the SDSU Task Force for Combating Antisemitism. I want to say thank you to this board for protecting free speech via the time, place, and manner policy, and for partnering with Hillel Chabad, AJC, and ADL on my campus. Your allyship positively impacts students like me. This past year has brought hostility and antisemitism to college campuses, including SDSU. Some professors have allowed themselves to use class time for personal activism instead of educating. A friend told me that her professor taught a Palestinian liberation poem on the same day the Iran-Israel war began. As she feared for her family's life from Iran's ballistic missiles, she sat in class feeling erased and unsafe. That semester, she became so afraid for her grade being targeted because she is Jewish that she stopped wearing her Jewish star necklace to class. This is not what SDSU stands for. To stop antisemitism in our classrooms, we need the CSU system to adopt an accurate definition of antisemitism, such as the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance definition to ensure clear protection for Jewish students, and to provide accurate antisemitism training that reaches all students and faculty. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sam, please go ahead and accept the unmute request.
Hi, I'm Sam Silva, a graduate teaching assistant in the Communications Studies Department at San Francisco State University and a proud UAW 4123 member. I'm here in solidarity with the 6,000 ISAs or instructional student assistants across the CSU who all deserve their fair access to sick leave, especially as we're still currently in an active pandemic. I've been sick twice in one month this semester as COVID ripped through my office repeatedly, doing the rounds. As academic student workers, we are in about our fifth month of bargaining for a new contract, and I urgently urge the CSU administration and the Board of Trustees to take into consideration the current needs of academic student workers on campus, not in two years, but right now, as is needed, and provide the fair and necessary access to sick leave that all workers, including ISAs, deserve. Please, I urge you to institute this as soon as possible, which does not mean two years from now, that means right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Jessica Schacter, Shayla Garnica, and Catherine Anderson.
Hello, my name is Jessica Schacter. I'm a junior at Cal State Long Beach, and I'm here to speak as a member of the Jewish community on campus. I'm the vice president of Beach Hillel and a member of the Hillel International's Israel Leadership Network. First, thank you to the board for allowing partnerships with institutions to help combat antisemitism, and thank you to the members who have shown support by bridging connections when needed. Despite this, antisemitism is still a rising issue on my campus. Just this semester, some students swarmed in our Interfaith Center library with ill intentions of taking over the space by fabricating lies to staff to kick us out, the Jewish students. Disruptions also occurred during Jewish events on campus where myself and the other Jewish students will get spit on and harassed. I've been called a zionazi directly to my face on campus as a Jewish student, and our Beach Hillel Instagram receives hate messages regularly on posts about Jewish campus life, including from staff members at CSU Fullerton. To combat this, I'm asking for mandatory antisemitism training for students, faculty, and staff, which can minimize this impact of hate on Jewish students, along with creating a campus-wide definition. I would like to ask the CSU system to please not let this toxic culture of antisemitism and normalization seep its way into our university. We are Jewish, and we want to be proud, not scared. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. I'm Kat Anderson, a graduate student at Chico State, member of Students for Quality of Education, and president of Chico's Council of Graduate Students. Over the summer, the formula for determining eligibility for the State University grant quietly changed. When we returned this fall, many graduate students, including me, found ourselves facing tuition bills four times higher than what we had budgeted for. We are students the CSU has already determined have financial need, and yet, without notice or explanation, that need is suddenly ignored. Some of us took out high-interest loans, others dropped to part-time status to stay enrolled. These are not choices made out of convenience but out of desperation. What's most painful is that we believe in the promise of public higher education, that through hard work, we could advance our education and contribute back to our communities. Graduate students are not a burden on this system. We are its future faculty, researchers, counselors, and leaders. As the CSU faces enrollment challenges in a shifting demographic landscape, graduate education is not a liability, it is an opportunity. We ask you to look into this issue with the care and urgency it deserves. The CSU cannot claim to value access and equity while quietly closing the door on those who have already walked through it. Thank you for your time and for hearing the voices of graduate students today.
Hi, my name is Shayla Garnica, and I am a student at Stanislaus State University, and I am with CFA. At Stanislaus State, we face a structural deficit of $13.6 million this year, rising to nearly $19.7 million in 2025. These financial pressures have forced our campus to cancel classes, reduce course sections, with many students not being able to get the classes they need to graduate, and layoffs with staff. With 18 employees already receiving layoff notices this spring alone, along with multiple programs either being completely cut off, such as the LSAM program, or facing major cuts, such as our ASPIRE program and our tutoring learning commons, I ask the board to please prioritize robust funding for our schools to ensure that faculty, staff, and layoffs, faculty and staff layoffs or STEM programs and student research initiatives are not eliminated and do not erode the educational mission. Please work to protect investments in students and faculty at Stanislaus State and other universities across California. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Danielle Davis and Ian Cohen.
Please work to protect investments in students and faculty.
Hello, I'm a graduate student at SDSU. And, sorry. I'm a graduate student at SDSU. I work in the Rhetoric and Writing Studies Department as a TA and a member of UAW 4123. I am here to advocate for paid sick leave for ISAs. These student workers have limited options when sick. They can either set aside risks of delaying recovery and spreading their illness, or they lose out on income by staying home. Staying home can risk finances such as rent, car payments, monies for groceries, et cetera. My union is in contract negotiations right now. By providing our ISAs with paid, with paid sick leave, this financial burden would be with paid sick leave, this financial burden would be alleviated. I urge the CSU administration and Board of Trustees to uplift our ISAs by quickly providing them with paid sick leave.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Yaniv Gotlib and Rio Bungalon.
Hi, my name is Yaniv Gotlib. I'm a senior at CSU San Marcos. I am the treasurer of Hillel, president of Student Supporting Israel, and a member of Hillel International's Israel Leadership Networks. I wanted to start by saying thank you to the CSU Board for the time, place, and manner policy, for the efforts you've put into supporting Jewish students. We really do feel it, and it does matter. However, I also wanted to be honest about what this year has been like for me on campus. The terrorist attacks on October 7th has been used as fuel for protests in unimaginable ways. One way that erases my community's pain and made many Jewish students, including myself, feel unsafe, that's not normal, and antisemitism should never be normalized. For me, it got personal. On October 8th, 2024, at a massive protest against October 7th attack, we were counterprotested and four Jew we counterprotested, and four students from the other side came at me so aggressively that I feared for my safety. We aren't acting to take anyone's voice away.
Please conclude your comment.
We're just we just need space for ours too. And the same for safety and respect that these policies were meant to provide for Jewish students and all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Clark, this concludes public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Corr. And thank you for all who traveled here to be in person and who appear virtually. We also appreciate your preparation, your civility, and your passion. I assure you, we respect your conviction and your perspectives, and we'll consider them. We'll now take a break until 2:31.
Excuse me. Hi, sorry to interrupt. We have a member, Alam Mustab, from San Bernardino. So this last time in September, she wasn't called to speak, and her name was submitted, and her name was submitted again today, and she was not called to speak. Can we correct that, please? She's been, she's waiting.
She can have one minute.
Fantastic. Can you call her? I think she's on virtually.
I can't do that. Do we have her?
Whoever has the power to do it. Yeah, she's waiting. Thank you.
What's her name?
Alam Mustab.
So if she's on, we'll give her one minute.
Thank you.
Can you please repeat the name?
Alam Mustab.
So she needs to be here.
They're not in the Zoom, and their name was called earlier.
Okay, so she can come, she will be here in January, and she can come talk to us then. So we're going to take a 10-minute break now till 2:32, and then we'll go on with our session. Thank you.
Adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. 6,700 service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. 6,700 service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. 6,700 service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. 6,700 service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and
As you're taking your seats, I'll begin the chair's report. I'd like to start my report by taking the opportunity, one week after marking Veterans' Day, to honor the veterans and active-duty military across our CSU. Thank you to the students, alumni, faculty, staff, presidents, and board members who have served and continue to serve this country. Your courage and commitment are admired and deeply appreciated. The CSU is home to nearly 7,000 service members and veterans and more than 13,000 military children and spouses. And please report that these numbers were up 7% in 2024, a trend that reflects our outreach to meet the needs to all of all students. To encourage enrollment, student veterans receive special admissions consideration and priority registration, and to ensure that they thrive on campus, every one of the CSU's 22 campuses has a Veterans Success Center. These are dedicated spaces for community and support, many of them staffed by veterans. Take, for example, Alex Ortega, Assistant Director of the Center at Cal State Fullerton. As a U.S. Army veteran and Titan alumnus, he's replicating his own experience when he helps students navigate GI Bill benefits and prepare for meaningful careers after graduation. Alex's own work could not be more meaningful, nor could his mission be clearer, to serve as a voice and support for student veterans. Thank you, Alex, and thank you again to every service member and veteran in our system. October started off on a high note with the investiture of the 13th President of California State University Stanislaus, Dr. Britt Rios Ellis. It was a moving and inspirational ceremony, one befitting, to borrow Chancellor Garcia's words, "such a, quote, 'principal, visionary, and student-centered leader,'" close quote. Congratulations, Dr. Rios Ellis. Congratulations are also in order for those responsible for the Graduation Initiative 2025 Symposium held last month. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but I have it on excellent authority. It was a productive and inspiring meeting. As we roll out the System-Wide Strategic Plan and new Student Success Framework, our alignment is even more critical than ever before. Kudos to those responsible for planning the convening under the leadership of Deputy Vice Chancellor Delsi Perez. Their important work brought leaders together from across the system in person and in mission to keep us focused on our North Star, student success. I also want to acknowledge my fellow trustees and the university teams who made it priority to attend, and I offer a special shout-out to Vice Chair Ramula, who closed out the event with a powerful keynote. Thank you, Diego. So November is National Native American Heritage Month, and the CSU's Office of Tribal Relations proudly participated in the Second Annual Native American Heritage Month Parade and the 58th Annual California Native Americans' Day Celebration, both in our state capitol. And I'm so pleased the CSU presence is growing at such events and to match our deep commitment to uplifting Native students and communities across the state. Now, a piece of really, really good news. The Fong and Federley Staff Award, the first statewide recognition program solely for CSU staff. As you likely surmise by its name, trustee Wenda Fong and her husband Daniel Federley recently established this award, which is supported by a 10-year funding commitment and a planned $2.5 million endowment. Each year, three individual staff members and one team of up to five staff members will be honored with a $25,000 award in one of four categories. Those categories are driving affordability, fostering equity, supporting first-generation students, and demonstrating leadership and innovation. The call for nominations goes out December 8th, and the inaugural awards will be presented at our May 2026 Board Meeting. There's no doubt in my mind, this award will further distinguish the CSU as an employer of choice. It will advance our mission, and it perfectly reflects our core values. Thank you, trustee Fong and Daniel Federley, for this generous investment in our exceptional staff and the future of the CSU. You continue to earn our deepest appreciation, and please give this trustee a round of applause. That's just outstanding. So, let me turn now to enrollment. Applications for the academic year 2026 and 2027 are coming in as we speak and will be accepted through the December 1 priority application deadline, though, as in the past, many universities will continue to accept applications beyond that deadline. We continue to see strong evidence the CSU's efforts to expand access and grow enrollment are working. As of early November, first time freshman applications are up more than 8%. Transfer applications have increased by over 10%, and graduate applications are also up from last year. These are promising trends, and I want to take a moment to update you on a few of the efforts responsible for this. It starts with reaching out to students early so they can move forward on the path to higher education with clarity and confidence. One way to do this is through dual enrollment, which enables high school students to take college coursework before they graduate from high school. In spring 2025, nearly 4,000 students earned credit at the CSU while still in high school. This is an This is an increase of more than 8% as compared to spring 2024. As most of you know, in fall 2024, the CSU launched its first-ever direct admissions program through a pilot through the Riverside County Office of Education. Eligible students at every public high school in Riverside County were offered immediate conditional application to 10 CSU campuses for fall 2025 term. More than 17,400 students in Riverside County received that offer. Opening a door to the CSU gave students and their families a choice they didn't realize they had, as well as confidence to pursue a degree. Results from this one-year pilot at Riverside demonstrate the difference that direct admissions made. Nearly 12,000 students from Riverside County applied to one or more CSUs. That's up 15% from the fall of 2024, and today, more than 3,200 students from this pilot are enrolled in the CSU. This represents an increase of nearly 4% over 2024. And as we're poised to springboard off the success of the Riverside pilot, because starting January 1, qualifying high school seniors across California will be directly admitted to a CSU campus for fall 2027 and beyond, thanks to Senate Bill 640. And we owe a debt of gratitude to Senator Christopher Calbedon for authoring the bill in partnership with the CSU Strategic Enrollment Plan and to Governor Newsom, who signed it into law last month. Please give them a round of applause. And I want to share an update on our dual-admission program, the Transfer Success Pathway. It offers first-time community college students guaranteed admission to a CSU campus and a major of their choice, provided they meet eligibility requirements and transfer to the campus within three years. Since the program's inception in 2023, roughly 1,200 community college students who signed a TSP agreement have transferred to CSU, and this year, nearly 4,000 students enrolled in the Transfer Success Pathway, a 12% increase over 2024. The goal of all these efforts is to reduce barriers so that more students see a clear and supportive path to earning life-changing CSU degree. The nation is increasingly recognizing the value that the CSU degree provides. I'll share just a few examples. Alexandria Education has awarded its prestigious seal of Alexandria. In 13 CSUs and the CSU Channel Islands earned a new Intentionally Thriving Institution designation for its work in preparing students and connecting them to the workforce. It should come as no surprise that CSU continues to score high in national college ratings. Forbes list of 25 colleges with the highest payoff included three CSUs this year: Dominguez Hills, Stanislaus, and Los Angeles. The U.S. News and World Report put three CSUs in the list of top performers for social mobility: Long Beach, Fullerton, and San Bernardino. And Wall Street Journal's Best Values Ratings included 14 CSUs with six in the top 20. These rankings highlight the CSU's dedication to student success, which Chancellor and Chief Reminder Officer Garcia has a chance to powerfully amplify this month as a featured panelist on a well-attended event hosted by Washington Monthly. That deserves a round of applause, too. I will end my report here, but before we proceed with our agenda, I wanted to share our next featured video. This one is a little different than what we're used to. It doesn't take us to a campus, but rather to a prison, where Cal State LA is inspiring hope and creating second chances with a prison graduation initiative. Please roll the video.
Hello? Hello, hello? Is there anybody out there? Please don't throw me away. I would do better. I don't deserve a second chance, but wish you would let me try again.
Now, with your definition--
I started teaching as a volunteer in 2013 at Lancaster, and once I got the support of Cal State LA, in 2016, we were chosen to be the first California university to be eligible for Second Chance Pell Grants, and that enabled us to become the first face-to-face degree in the state of California. If you can imagine yourself as one of our students, many have served, you know, 20, 30 years in prison. Having someone physically come in to teach you face-to-face signals so much and is so transformational just from the care, the understanding, the effort that person's putting into your life. It's the human touch. It's having someone there that lets you know, you know, "We care about you. You're important. We want you to do well in this class."
Yeah, I was supposed to die in prison. I was sentenced to life without parole, and so I wasn't ever supposed to get out. I was in Lancaster Prison for a total of 15 years. I was incarcerated for 25. Having the success that I've had is like another form of light, of hope, for those that are inside. And so every day, I get to encourage and to affirm people that are inside, that they're better than the worst choices that they've ever made in their lives.
I served 28 years and eight months. I had life without the possibility of parole, and 2019, Governor Newsom commuted my sentence. I never thought it was going to happen, like, even when they called my name and said, "Hey, you know, report, you're going home," it hit me like, you know, "I'm free." For me, getting a bachelor's degree means more than just getting a piece of paper. It's important because it has an impact on so many other people the same way that my crime did.
Currently, 72 people have graduated from our programs. We have another 24 scheduled to graduate in spring, and we have a total of 170 students on a pathway to a bachelor's degree in four different programs across the state.
And we're really, really dedicated to this work on many levels, and we hope to actually expand it in the future. We're just starting, in my mind. A lot of the families and a lot of the students feel the impact, and then they pay it forward. You don't have to be down and out because you're here. You can actually invest in yourself in a different way, and that's what we're trying to do.
Being a provider of students with a bachelor's degree in-person program is paramount to them, you know, getting the tools they need when they reintegrate back into society.
Higher education for incarcerated students is the most cost-effective, evidence-based solution to ending mass incarceration. Nationally, the recidivism rate for everyone, anyone that has a bachelor's degree, is around 5%. In our program, it's 0%.
Keep believing in yourself, keep dreaming, and keep going for it.
The one thing that I always felt upon using from campus later is the power that I possess to shut out the doubt that whispering, "Let him count it." You're not smart enough, or you're not-- Quit now, and then quit. I--
I no longer hope captive by trauma, addiction, the street game.
I'm a product of this school prison pipeline.
Yeah, yeah, this is where I came from.
Trustee Firstenberg.
I cannot thank you enough for that story. I had the privilege of going to the Women's Correctional Institute for their commencement. I really believe in commencement. I think it's one of the most important moments in anyone's life. I really believe it's for the parents and the grandparents because we know what that symbolizes. This was the most moving experience I've had at a commencement, and I've been to a lot. And I think, I think the CSU should take a moment and say, "We're doing the right thing." And I'm incredibly proud to be with all of you who are part of that, so thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for those words. There are people who doubt the power of higher education. They shouldn't do so after watching a video like that. Congratulations, Cal State LA. And with that, I will now turn it over to the Chair of the Academic Senate, Chair Boyd.
Thank you, Chair Clark. Buenos dias. Canitua, mahaba, and talu fa. Good afternoon, everyone. With respect, I begin today by acknowledging that I speak to you on the land of the Tongva and Gabaraleño and the Ahachemen and Oneino nations who have lived and continue to live here. I recognize the Tongva and the Ahachemen nations and their spiritual connection to the ocean and the land as the first stewards and the traditional caretakers of this area we now call Long Beach. As I share this report, I thank them for their strength, perseverance, and resistance. As always, it is a privilege to sit in this seat as Chair and report to you today on behalf of the Academic Senate of California State University, the official voice of nearly 30,000 faculty, and serving nearly half a million students in the state of California. The ASCSU continues to be a key partner in shared governance of the system, advancing our mission of academic excellence, equity, and access. In that, I also want to give a shout-out to my CFA colleagues and other union leaders who showed up today to share with you all the situation we are in with respect to salaries and wages of the faculty and the CSU. Since my last report in September, the ASCSU convened its interim committee meetings in October and its November plenary meetings. We welcomed the newest member of the ASCSU, as the Chancellor designee, Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs, Dr. Junius Gonzalez, to our November plenary, and the ASCSU is very eager to collaborate with him and continue advancing the academic mission of the CSU. Shared governance and academic freedom remain essential to the success and integrity of higher education. Over the past year, the ASCSU has worked to strengthen its partnerships with all of the stakeholders of the CSU and other system leaders. Faculty involvement in state and federal advocacy, as well as academic planning, budget, enrollment management, and student success, has been central to our collective progress. The ASCSU reaffirms its commitment to being an action-oriented body rooted in the strategic thinking and guided by the principles of shared governance and academic freedom. These principles are not only foundational, they are non-negotiable in protecting that democratic mission of public higher education. ASCSU faculty have been deeply engaged in system-wide initiatives vital to the CSU's future. Strategic enrollment management, for example. I continue to serve on the steering committee, from whom you will hear from tomorrow, and I continue to serve on the committee while I'm heartened by the comprehensive look it's taking at the admissions strategy and student demographics, including how we serve adult learners, graduate students, and first-time, first-year students. Strengthening faculty consultation in this work will be crucial as we move forward, and I hope that the ASCSU's Academic Affairs Committee will continue to be involved in these discussions. A presentation to the Board of Trustees is coming tomorrow, and we're really happy to continue to be a part of that. Artificial intelligence. The ASCSU members continue to serve in both of the AI Workforce Acceleration Board, as well as the Generative AI Committees, as well as the Committee of Academic Technology. And in August, I testified at the California Assembly's Joint Hearing on the CSU AI Empowered Initiative alongside leaders from CFA, CSSA, and CSUEU. And at our plenary in November, we had a very deep discussion about the reports from these committees and the future direction that we intend to help lead. Discussion was enhanced by the CSSA Vice President of Systemwide Affairs, Katie Karum, during her CSSA liaison report to the ASCSU, and we were very appreciative of that. Thank you. In terms of student success, it was a pleasure to kick off Day Two of our final Graduation Initiative Symposium with CSSA President Al Rahani. I'm sorry about the mariners for myself, but we're very happy for the student success framework, and our ASCSU is looking forward to the work as we engage in advancing that framework that was unveiled at the Symposium. Internally, we have some operational improvement that we've been working on, and I just wanted to mention those. The ASCSU office, in particular, we have a vacancy there, and I've been working closely with Program Manager McQuire to finalize that description, and we have submitted that to HR, so we're hoping to have a fully-fledged staff in that office by the time we hit the new year. We're also working on streamlining our travel procedures with our canvases. At its November meeting, we adopted several resolutions, but first, I'd like to begin with a correction of my report from the last meeting in September about our resolution on the protection of HSI. And although the correct text was sent to you all, and I shared it with the Assembly of Higher Education Committee yesterday, I wanted to correct it here for the record. So in AS 3761, Protecting Federal Hispanic Serving Institution Programs, the ASCSU in September encouraged the state of California to join as an intervenor in Tennessee and Students for Fair Admissions versus the U.S. Department of Education and the CSU to file an amicus brief. It also encouraged the California Congressional Delegation to work to protect current programs that fund HSI institutions. Now, at its November plenary, the ASCSU adopted two resolutions. The first was a bit of a housekeeping resolution with respect to its AS 3760, which supports the California State University System Office Review Standards for General Education Area Six Ethnic Studies submissions. And this updates a prior resolution supporting the CSU System Office Review Standards to incorporate the current label for ethnic studies as Area Six. The second resolution is more substantial, and this is AS 3771, which was introduced on the floor as a call to finalize the appointment of the California State University Faculty Trustee. The ASCSU reaffirms its strong support for the two candidates, both in attendance today, that it recommended to Governor Gavin Newsom in March 2025, and urges the governor to promptly appoint one as the next CSU Faculty Trustee for the term that began July 1, 2025. In addition to the resolution, I'd like to ask that you especially turn your attention to Pages 4 and 5 of the rationale, which I think speak to the larger issue around this. I'd also like to acknowledge Member-at-Large Butler Bird, as many of these words were from her and applauded at the ASCSU. Copies of these resolutions have been transmitted to you and shared with the appropriate state and federal stakeholders. In terms of that, legislative and government relations is another piece I wanted to mention. As Chair, I discussed a draft report on differential tuition, where certain programs charge different rates with the LAO Legislative Analyst Office. The ASCSU has a long history of weighing in on tuition, 59 resolutions to be exact since 2006, and we look forward to the continued conversation. In addition to testimony at the California Assembly's Joint Hearing on CSU AI Empowered Initiative, I have also been invited to testify at two legislative hearings. The first of those was yesterday, where I testified at the Assembly's Higher Education Committee on the Impact of Federal Actions on Higher Education Across California. Academic Affairs Vice Chancellor Gonzalez, CSSA Chair Villarreal, and I separately represented the CSU in three panels. Of all the segments in higher education, I was the only Senate Chair to testify, and only one of two faculty. I spoke to the impacts of the MSI-HSI funding instability on international scholarship and learning, on students from immigrant and mixed-datalas families, on campus climate and community well-being, and the broader context of faculty and staff impact. Specialist Lamb and Vicer Swenson also provided exceptional public comment at the end of the hearing. I'm super grateful to the team that assisted in that testimony both before and during the hearing. Legislative Specialist Lamb from Bakersfield and Pitts from Fresno, as well as Senator Paxton from Dominguez Hills, Member-at-Large from Nacano, Stan State, Vice Chair Swenson from Northridge, and Advocacy and State Relations Associate by Chancellor Dietrich. The second hearing that I've been asked to testify at is, will be held in December 8th, and this is on the future of the CSU, which is a joint hearing of the Assembly Budget Subcommittee Number Three on Education Finance and the Assembly Committee on Higher Education. This joint hearing is expected to address CSU enrollment, cost-saving measures like the Bay Area Collaborative, and the use of recent state funding. As I said in September, public higher education is at a tipping point. Nationally, we face mounting political efforts to dismantle core values of higher education, academic freedom, inclusion, and access. The CSU must continue to serve as a national model, not only in governance, but in defending the right to intellectual freedom and knowledge production. Academic freedom is not optional. It is the cornerstone of higher education, and we must protect it. We must protect the rights of our students to learn. We must resist the systems that seek to threaten the future success of our students that depend on the education that the California State University system provides. And again, I'll repeat from my September report. Who we serve has never been more important. How we serve them has never been more critical. And what we stand for now will define the legacy of the California State University. The ASCSU remains steadfast in its role as a voice for faculty and a partner in shared governance. Thank you for your continued partnership, and thank you for supporting the role of faculty in the life of the CSU, and I welcome your questions. Thank you, Chair Clark. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Chair Boyd. We will now hear from our next report from the California State Student Association, Tara Al Rahani. Would you please share your report?
Yes, and thank you, Chair Clark. Good afternoon, Trustees, Chancellor Garcia, University Presidents, and everyone else here today. My name is Tara Al Rahani, and I humbly serve as the President of the California State Student Association. CSSA represents nearly half a million CSU students to the CSU Legislature and the Board of Trustees, and it is an honor to provide this report on their behalf today. This is my third report at a Board of Trustees meeting, serving as CSSA President. But as we close out 2025, I am in deep reflection over the safety and security of our CSU community. The political landscape has only continued to challenge us as the year goes on, but the CSU persists. The increasing aggression against higher education institutions for upholding equitable practices, the presence of immigration enforcement, and the racially targeted attacks in our communities remains a threat to the stability and assurance of our students and their families. There is an overwhelming sense of fear, uncertainty, and confusion. However, we are confident that the CSU will continue to do what they can to preserve the greater system and protect against future aggressions. And quite frankly, we must. Still, politics is only one aspect of what defines this moment for our system. We are reminded of our shared humanity as we mourn the recent loss of members of our CSU community. We send our condolences to the families of Lauren Turner and Destiny Morris, two highly dedicated student athletes at CSU Fullerton who lost their lives this month. Their passing is a reminder to care for one another, to lead with empathy, to be patient, to offer grace in difficult moments, and to create a campus environment where every student feels seen, supported, and valued. In honoring their memory, let us take a moment to recommit ourselves to fostering kindness and compassion throughout the CSU community. This system is strong, and we will endure. Carrying that compassion with us, we turn to the important conversations that lie ahead. The Strategic Enrollment Management Plan will be discussed tomorrow. I'd like to highlight that as this plan begins to roll out in conjunction with the Student Success Framework and CSU Forward, the center of all of this is our students. Whether they are traditional or non-traditional, we must remember that this work is intended to remove barriers and uplift those coming to our system from a variety of backgrounds. Our organization knows the commitments being made are a tall ask, and we are grateful. But more importantly, we are also committed to helping this process along every step of the way. This plan expands what the student lifecycle looks like and discusses equity, access, modernization, and program flexibility. Its importance cannot be understated. That being said, increased enrollment substantially helps our universities, and we should acknowledge that investments in vital student services are what will ensure stability in the long term. With the proper strategic considerations, caution, and allocation of funding, our system should be able to both expand on and preserve what exists. We must be mindful of every step taken to not disrupt the progress and pathways of currently enrolled students. It will be a delicate balance, but entirely possible. Since the last time this board was convened, CSSA hosted three plenary meetings. We passed both our policy agenda and the foundation of our white paper on artificial intelligence. Our policy agenda outlines four priorities. One, address the total cost of attendance for CSU students. Affordability is a cornerstone of the CSU's mission, and it aims to provide high-quality education to Californians from all backgrounds. Our efforts to maintain affordability will continue to focus on advocating for and expanding financial aid options, exploring cost-reduction strategies, sustainable transit solutions, and other means of lowering the overall cost. As the Student Success Framework highlights, we must recognize that easy and streamlined access to affordable housing, food pantries, and technology services are integral to a student's academic success. Two, ensure students have access to high-quality wellness and mental health support services. Providing and promoting timely and accessible mental health resources is becoming more attainable than ever. As AI tools continue to advance, our hope is that it will allow our staff to cut down on time-consuming administrative tasks to better focus on the students and the rest of our campus community who come forward seeking support. Advocating for the creation and implementation of 24/7 telehealth services continues to be a priority for our organization. But physical health is just as important as mental. We continue to discuss how we can expand programs promoting holistic wellness, including fitness, nutrition, and stress management, to create a balanced support system for students. Three, ensure the academic success and holistic educational experience of all CSU students. To my earlier point, our students, our universities, our cities, and our system are being targeted. But we need to continue to show up as one unit, to protect and affirm our students, their families, identities, and communities. We will not ignore the political climate and focus only on the academic and career success. We can't. It is a both-and. By working together to enhance safety protocols, know-your-rights campaigns, and services alike, we honor our promise to protect students while helping them advance their own lives. That is why students choose the CSU. Four, foster inclusive engagement for students to find agency in the CSU community. More specifically, the continued equal partnership and inclusive co-creation between students and the larger system is what empowers us to see ourselves as not just participants, but co-architects of the CSU experience, strengthening trust, belonging, and collective progress across the system. This approach ensures students have a real voice and shared responsibility in building a stronger, more inclusive CSU. As noted, CSSA also passed the Guiding Principles for our AI White Paper, titled "Improving the Implementation of the CSU Artificial Intelligence Initiative for Students." Developed through the Systemwide Affairs Committee and authored by VPA Systemwide Affairs Karum, with input from all twenty-three associated student organizations, the paper provides a student-driven evaluation of the CSU's partnership with OpenAI and the launch of ChatGPT-EDU across the system. At its core, the white paper emphasizes that equity is as important as access. While we progress toward digital modernization, students have reported inconsistent implementation, limited awareness, and insufficient training that has resulted in varied use across campuses. We look forward to the opportunity to aid our faculty in the establishment of clear, transparent policies to ensure consistent classroom practices around AI use. Students have also raised concerns regarding academic integrity in the classroom, citing the lack of unified guidance on ethical use and the growing reliance on unreliable AI detection tools that have led to false accusations and damaged trust. Additional recommendations highlighted the ethical and psychological dimensions of AI use. We encourage the CSU to continue to prioritize student well-being, data privacy, and critical thinking education as AI becomes more deeply integrated into our learning environments. The paper concludes by reaffirming that innovation must be accompanied by accountability, transparency, and inclusion. Students across the CSU have made it clear. This technology should enhance, not replace, human connection, integrity, and shared governance. And we will be sharing the final draft in the coming weeks. While the changing political landscape has devastated many of our communities this past year, CSSA has remained resolved in advancing student-centered priorities in basic needs, campus climate and safety, and affordability. I'm pleased to report that two CSSA cosponsored bills, SB 27 authored by Reyes and SB 98 authored by Perez, were signed into law. SB 271 expands support for student parents by integrating childcare services and resources into core basic needs infrastructure across public higher education, while SB 98 establishes clear, timely campus notification protocols when immigration enforcement is present, strengthening safety and trust for immigrant and mixed-status communities. These victories reflect sustained student advocacy and partnership with legislative leaders, CSU stakeholders, and community allies. Collective action matters, and CSSA is willing and able to partner in these efforts to both uplift and preserve our system. Yesterday, CSSA Chair Erin Villarreal testified at the Assembly Higher Education Committee's Hearing on the Future of Higher Ed and the Role of the Federal Government, alongside other CSU stakeholders. He emphasized the need to protect access, affordability, and inclusion amid federal actions threatening financial aid, DEI programs, and food assistance, while also noting that uncertainty at the federal level and potential funding reductions placed an added strain on the CSU's budget. Chair Villarreal underscored that although California cannot control federal policy, the state must lead in safeguarding funding stability and ensuring every student's right to learn, feel welcome, and thrive. Looking forward, CSSA is preparing for when the state legislature reconvenes in January, and we continue to be focused on advancing priorities around student affordability, basic needs, financial aid reform, and stable CSU funding. CSSA is also strengthening our budget advocacy strategy to ensure that students' voices remain central in state budget deliberations and policy discussions. Through coordinated engagement with campus representatives, system partners, and state leaders, we will continue to champion the needs of all CSU students in the year ahead. It is no secret that the partnership between CSSA and the CSU has led to historic wins in just this last legislative cycle. After seeing what we were able to achieve together, we are excited to build on this momentum and deliver our best on our shared priorities centering students. Before I conclude, I want to reemphasize that these few months have challenged this system and its students in unprecedented ways, and we don't know if future months will be any easier. But the way out is together. I urge you all to connect with your student leaders, talk to them, share with them, and inform them. We have seen time and time again that when we operate as one unit, we succeed. Chair Clark, thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Well done, President Al Rahani. We will now hear our next report from President Adrian Harrell of the CSU Alumni Council. President Harrell.
Thank you, Chair Clark. It's an honor to be with you today on behalf of the CSU Alumni Council, and it is especially meaningful as members of the Alumni Council Executive Committee are here following yesterday's advance, which is our annual strategic planning session. Please allow me to recognize those members in attendance. Immediate Past President John Polley. I think he's, there he is. Secretary Joseph Wong. Treasurer John Gomes. Alumni Director Representative Lori Brockett. Programs Committee Chair Crystal Wymer Lucero. And of course, Alumni Trustee Larry Adamson. We're also pleased to welcome special guests Noemi Gavara, Director of Alumni Engagement at CSU Long Beach. Where's Noemi? There she is. And Craig Shire, Alumni Representative from Cal Poly St. Louis Abyspo, whose perspectives were invaluable during yesterday's meeting. In celebrating CSU Forward and the Student Success Framework, let me begin by offering sincere congratulations to the Chancellor, Trustees, and University Leadership for the launch of CSU Forward and Student Success Framework. Just yesterday, the Executive Committee held our annual advance where we began the process of revising our strategic plan to align with these system-wide plans. I look forward to providing more details once this has been presented and adopted by the full board. While I attended virtually, Alumni Representative Craig Shire and Executive Director Jody Braverman had the opportunity to attend the Graduation Initiative Symposium and were in the room for the unveiling of the Student Success Framework. They shared with me the pride they felt as they listened to the bold new direction and the unified vision for what the CSU can and will be. The Alumni Council is particularly grateful that alumni have been named as a strategic partner in this important work. The inclusion of alumni in areas such as career-connected learning and mentorship is not just appreciated, it's essential. As the finished product of the CSU, alumni are uniquely positioned to help deliver on the CSU's promise that every student will graduate with the opportunity for a first career job and a clear path to further study. We are proud to be aligned with this vision and understand the importance of partnership to meet with the objectives laid out in the plans. We recently met with ASCSU to begin exploring opportunities and plan to also meet with the CSSA and Career Services Director so we can work together and make good on the CSU's promise. Allow me to share a highlight on alumni-student connection. On the partnership front, I want to highlight a notable example of student-alumni connection that took place at the CSU Channel Islands, where the Career Development and Alumni Engagement Office collaborated with admissions and recruitment to launch the CSUCI Alumni Ambassador Program. Seven first-time alumni volunteers participated in virtual coffee chats with alumni mentor where they connected with admitted students and shared their CSUCI journey, offering insight on navigating financial aid, building campus community, and transitioning to university life. In addition to virtual engagement, in-person welcome receptions were hosted across various regions. These events brought together admitted students and their families who had the opportunity to interact directly with the alumni ambassadors and future classmates. To reinforce the connection, personalized postcards were sent from alumni ambassadors to admitted students, providing a warm welcome, individualized welcome that helped foster a sense of belonging before the students arrived on campus. Preliminary outcomes show a fourteen percent increase in yield from Ventura County, a seventy-one percent increase from Kern County, and a forty-four percent increase from Santa Barbara County, compared to those who did not participate in the Alumni Ambassador Program. As promised, I'd like to shine a spotlight on alumni. In honor of Veterans Day, we want to express our deep gratitude to all CSU alumni, faculty, staff, administrators, and students who have served in the military and to celebrate the impact they continue to have on their communities, their industries, and our country. At Sonoma State, two extraordinary alumni, Delphine Metcalf Foster and Vincent Curry, stand out as powerful examples of what's possible when military discipline and CSU education come together. First Sergeant Delphine Metcalf Foster, a 2001 graduate of Sonoma State University and a twenty-one-year US Army veteran, served in Operation Desert Storm, and is a Bronze Star Medal recipient. She spent twenty-one years working as a Quality Assurance Work Leader at Alameda Naval Air Station. Following retirement, Delphine broke historic ground by becoming the first woman National Commander of the Disabled American Veterans. She has become a leading advocate for veterans. She has become a leading advocate for veterans, volunteering countless hours at the VA facilities and serving on high-level advisory committees. She has testified before both the House and Senate Committees on Veteran Affairs, advocating to improve outreach to and services for women and all veterans. Vincent Curry, a 1985 graduate and Sonoma State's first Black Computer Science major, went on to serve in the U.S. Air Force as an Information Manager. After completing four years of active duty, he launched a successful career as a civilian computer scientist for the U.S. Department of Defense, building networks and developing secure databases critical to national defense. Over the decades, Vincent's CSU degree propelled him from classified systems development to leading tech departments in the Washington, D.C. area. He credits Sonoma State with laying the foundation for his career and with instilling a value for higher education that has passed on to his children. These alumni stories are a reminder that supporting veterans in college is an investment that echoes through careers, industries, and generations. To all CSU alumni who have served, we thank you. Your service inspires us, and your legacy uplifts generations to come. At the CSU, the power of a degree doesn't stop with one graduate. It ripples across families. One such example is Karen Charles, a proud alumna of Cal State San Marcos whose journey with the CSU has come to a full circle. As a first-generation college student, Karen attended San Marcos with the goal of becoming an elementary school teacher, a career that she has enjoyed for more than two decades. She credits the university for her preparation as a teacher, sharing that it was helpful that so many of her professors had been in the classroom before. It wasn't someone just saying what it was going to be like. It was based on real-life experience without sugarcoating everything. Karen recently returned her alma mater, this time as a parent, attending family orientation with her daughter, who's following in her mother's footsteps as a CSU San Marcos student looking towards a career working with children. This story of return and legacy is one of thousands that play out across the 22 campuses every year. And in that legacy, we see the true return on investment for California: thriving families, engaged citizens, and a stronger, more connected future. In closing, I want to remind everyone listening of two things. Alumni are ready and willing to serve. Please work with your respective alumni offices to invite alumni onto every working group as much as possible and recognize them at every event along with all the other constituencies. Second, funding for the CSU is an investment, not an expense. That investment yields graduates who serve our state, support our economy, and uplift entire families and communities. We are energized by the university's bold vision and are honored to partner in the work ahead. Thank you, Chair Clark. This concludes my report.
Thank you, President Harrell. It's my pleasure now to turn it over to our Chancellor, Dr. Mildred Garcia, for her report.
Good afternoon y buenas tardes. Thank you, Chair Clark. Please join me in welcoming Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, Junius Gonzalez, to the CSU and its first Board of Trustees meeting. I'd also like to begin by recognizing more than a few individuals who deserve our admiration and applause. The first being, as Chair Clark shared, are veterans and military, affiliated students, faculty, staff, leaders, and alumni. We are indebted to you for your defense of our democracy and the country we love, and we are privileged to have you at the heart of the Cal State community. Thank you. Thank you very much. And to trustee Fong, words simply can't express my appreciation and my admiration for all you have done and continue to do so for the CSU. As a trustee and my first chair and former chair, as I was appointed, through your extraordinary, generous, and visionary philanthropic support together with your husband Daniel and in myriad other ways. Your legacy was already secure and it's fast becoming legendary. Thank you. Four of our universities and their presidents have also earned special recognition this fall. First, I'd like to share one of the many early successes of the CSU's Artificial Intelligence Initiative. President Steve Perez and his IT and Student Affairs Divisions at Chico State have teamed up to reimagine the student experience using the power of AI. They've streamlined processes to create more personalized outreach, a one-stop digital onboarding hub, first-year coaches and peer groups, career readiness tools, and a 24/7 support navigator powered by AI. Funded in part by a million-dollar investment from the Chancellor's office to grow enrollment, this innovative and collaborative work will be measured in new students, in retention, in belonging, and ultimately lives transformed. Thank you, Steve Perez, for this excellent example of using AI for good. Chico State, congratulations. Our congratulations also goes to San Francisco State President Lynn Mahoney, who this month received the 2025 President's Award from NASPAS Region 6. NASPAS is the premier international organization representing more than 13,000 student-affair professionals at 1,400 colleges and universities across 25 countries. Region 6 elected President Mahoney for this significant recognition in honor of her sustained work in advancing the quality of student life. With her dedicated service and compassionate leadership now spanning three CSUs, I can't think of a more deserving recipient. Congratulations, President Mahoney. Third, on the occasion of his last Board of Trustees meeting as President of CSU Dominguez Hills, I am so glad to be able to recognize President Thomas Parham on his latest of an extremely long list of career achievements. He will be celebrated as a 2025 pioneer of African Achievement Honore at the Brotherhood Crusade's December Awards Gala in Beverly Hills. The renowned organization has chosen to honor President Parham for, and I quote, "his impeccable credentials and relentless advocacy for students in higher education." Close quote. Congratulations, President Parham. We also look forward to celebrating your extraordinary 40-year career during the January Board Meeting. And on a related note, I am very pleased to announce that after consultation with board leadership, I have appointed Dr. Marianne Villarreal to serve as Interim President of CSU Dominguez Hills as we conduct our national search for the next regularly-appointed president. Dr. Villarreal is well-known to many of you. She served for more than five years at Cal State Fullerton, including as Associate Vice President of Academic Affairs. And for the past year, she has played a critical role in the development and early implementation of CSU Forward. She currently serves as Vice President for Institutional Excellence for American Association of Colleges and Universities, and I'll have more to share about Dr. Villarreal's experience during tomorrow's meeting of the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel. For now, I will simply say that I'm confident that she will serve Dominguez Hills well and the CSU as a well-principled and student-centered leader during this time of transition. And please, let's congratulate Dr. Parham for his amazing award. I also want to offer my heartfelt congratulations to San Jose State President Cynthia Teniente Matson, who just two days ago delivered this year's President-to-President Lecture at the annual convening of the American Association of State Colleges and Universities, an award that is chosen by her presidential peers. Many of you know that this is one of ASU's highest and most prestigious awards, and it's certainly an honor that it is well-deserved. Congratulations, President Teniente Matson. Before I continue my report, I want to take a moment to make a brief but critically important point. In tomorrow's Committee on University and Faculty Personnel, you will hear an update on our ongoing work to strengthen the CSU's civil rights programs and practices. You will learn that we continue to make progress, improve reporting processes, and to ensure safe, welcoming, and holistic supportive environment on every campus. However, new and troubling allegations have recently come to light in lawsuits concerning a few of our campuses. I will not go into details about these cases. That would not be appropriate at this time or in this forum. But as your chancellor, I simply cannot be silent on this matter. So allow me to speak generally. I am taking immediate action, and all matters are being strictly reviewed immediately. These allegations, all allegations, will be handled with the utmost seriousness and utmost concern. All incidents will be fully and timely investigated, and any and all responsible parties will be held accountable. Let me repeat that. All responsible parties will be held accountable. And if this occurs, my dear trustees, and if it doesn't occur, I ask you to hold me accountable. Please hear me. The CSU will do right by all our people. Now back to my report. As you are aware, on October 16th, I publicly announced our intention to accept a short-term zero-interest loan of $144 million made available to the CSU in the '25-'26 state budget. You'll recall that this loan is intended to cover the $144 million reduction of our ongoing budget caused by the state's deferral of these funds until '26-'27. Once again, I must emphasize that the loan represents one-time... I'll say that again. The loan represents one-time and not ongoing dollars and must be paid back in full no later than July 1, 2026. Being one-time dollars, the funds cannot be used to support ongoing costs such as those associated with creating or reinstating positions or programming. As I have announced to the CSU community, our intention is to use the funds to create a one-time compensation pool for all employees. Recognizing the CSU's mission is entirely dependent on our people, even though we are under fiscal constraint. Our North Star is student success, and our students succeed because of the skilled and dedicated work of our faculty and staff, doing all that we can to support them, even though challenging fiscal circumstances advances the objectives of CSU Forward and in particular, our work to become the employer of choice in public higher education. I'm pleased to inform you that on November 5th, we received notice that the Department of Finance and Joint Legislative Budget Committee have approved our loan request, and we expect to be in receipt of the funds. We look forward to discussing the details of the one-time compensation with our union partners at the bargaining table and hope to have this money in our employees' hands as quickly as possible. Fairly and competitively compensating the CSU's dedicated and highly-valued employees is a top priority of mine. It's a reflection of the CSU's commitment to its people, who are the very foundation of our mission. More than a financial commitment, it's an affirmation of our values and our purpose. And as I mentioned just a minute ago, it is central to the system-wide strategic plan objective to become an employer of choice in public higher education. To help meet this objective, tomorrow in the Committee on University and Faculty Personnel, we will present a new compensation policy philosophy for the CSU. It is based upon a focus on total compensation that meets the holistic needs of all of our employees throughout their careers, and it ensures fair compensation through accurate and current peer benchmarking and a commitment to transparency and communication. To this end, you will recall that a staff salary study was presented to this board in May 2022. A faculty salary study followed in March 2023. We will initiate a new staff salary survey in early 2026, and we will announce the timeline for the next faculty study once the staff salary analysis is underway. As part of this broader effort, tomorrow we will also address an issue that frankly has proven to be challenging for us over decades, just as it has at other public higher education systems, and that is executive compensation. So we will propose a new executive compensation policy consistent with the principles of our overall compensation philosophy. You will hear the details of the policy tomorrow. But for now, I will emphasize that it is appropriately market-based, relying on our first executive compensation comparative study since 2019. The policy uses modern pay programs prevalent across public higher education, and it provides the CSU with the flexibility we need to address fast-changing market conditions. Additionally and importantly, it is attentive to our limited budgetary resources and our long-term financial sustainability, and it reflects a sensitivity to the needs and perspectives of all of the CSU stakeholders. And I am confident that it is consistent with the CSU's mission and core values. You may also recall this year's state budget contains a requirement that the CSU provide the legislature with turnaround plans for campuses identified as under-enrolled. We welcome this requirement. In fact, and in line with the system-wide strategic plan's performance objective of attaining a sustainable affordability, our intent even well before we were aware of the statutory requirement has been to introduce a comprehensive fiscal health monitoring process whereby all CSU campuses will provide the Chancellor's Office with detailed fiscal and enrollment reports along with action plans to address any issues identified. This will allow us to proactively monitor fiscal health and enrollment trends across the system, identifying risks, and providing targeted support to universities in need. Additionally, we have asked the campuses to share all cost-saving strategies as well. This is a shining example of systemness. This program will allow us to identify, share, and scale promising practices, and it will allow us to more precisely quantify, qualify, and contextualize the full impact of chronic underfunding on our students and our mission. This has long been a broad priority that will powerfully amplify our budget advocacy, and I want to thank all of those individuals at the Chancellor's Office and our campuses for the extremely hard work to bring this critically important program to life. And I look forward to updating you on this effort in the coming months. Also critical to the CSU's ongoing fiscal health is strong and sustained enrollment. There's only one way that the CSU can continue to drive economic mobility for the people of California, is to attract the very best faculty and staff as an employer of choice and to power our Golden State workforce and communities. and to power our Golden State workforce and communities, and that is by extending access and opportunity to students of all ages, stages, and SIP codes across California. So on tomorrow's agenda, we will hear an update on our ongoing efforts to develop the CSU's first comprehensive strategic enrollment management framework, one that will serve as a cornerstone of our system-wide strategic plan, CSU Forward. As you will learn, the framework is designed not only to expand access to a CSU degree, it has spurred us to completely rethink how we attract and serve today's learners. It calls on us to employ data and build regional partnerships, both among our campuses and with our educational and regional partners, to align our academic programs with California's workforce needs, and it compels us to modernize, streamline, and coordinate the systems that support our students from well beyond admission through graduation, their careers, and lifelong learning. It is clear that we can no longer simply wait for the students to appear on our doorsteps as we did in the decades past. For the first time in the CSU's history at the system level, this strategic enrollment framework represents a proactive, comprehensive, and data-driven approach to expanding opportunity and prosperity across every region of California, and I am so excited for its infinite possibilities. With this framework in place, every student that the CSU attracts, enrolls, supports, and transforms becomes part of the CSU story. The stories of dreams achieved, trajectories forever changed, communities enriched, and industry strengthened by our talented students and alumni around the globe. And to share that powerful story, I am thrilled to report that our External Relations and Communications Team here at the chancellor's office has launched CSU Voices, a multi-channel advocacy platform that brings together students, alumni, faculty, staff, and supporters from across the state to champion the CSU and shape its bright future. This new platform allows us to mobilize our stakeholders to take action in support of key legislative priorities at both the state and federal level, not least of which is budget advocacy. We've already witnessed during this last year's budget cycle especially the power of our collective voice. Our goal is to now build the most influential advocacy arm the CSU has ever seen. CSU Voices empowers our community, our friends, our supporters to email and text our elected officials and to post on social media in a strategic and coordinated way. To expand this powerful army of advocates, we need your help, everyone's help. I ask that you all register and that you invite everyone you know to register and visit calstate.edu/csuvoices to sign up so that we can all stay informed and take action with a unified and powerful voice. With that, I will end my report and take just a moment to introduce a special presentation that will provide eye-popping data and a wealth of examples that back up the CSU's unparalleled story of impact. With diligent assistance from the Public Policy Team, ICF, we welcome Director of Public Policy, Elizabeth Eliza Johnston, who joins us today. The CSU recently completed a full and detailed report on the economic impact of the CSU, our return on investment. Similar reports were completed in 2010 and 2020, but thanks to advances in methodology and data collection, it's safe to say that this is by far the most comprehensive and robust economic impact report the CSU has ever produced. Importantly, it measures not only dollars, jobs, and industry activity, but also the CSU's impact on our students' lives and families, our contributions as a research powerhouse, and the countless benefits our universities deliver to our workforce, to communities across California, and to our nation. As we work to communicate the CSU's value to legislators, to build vital partnerships, to align with industry leaders, to deepen community roots as stewards of place, and to inspire philanthropic support, this report is a goldmine of persuasive data and compelling stories that can be shared with audiences across our state. And it truly demonstrates why the CSU stands apart. No other system matches our impact and influence. This report stands as a powerful proof. Without stealing the thunder of our presenters, allow me to share just a few of the top headlines. Most exhilarating to me was learning that nearly half of all graduates with bachelor's degree in California across every field earned their degree from the CSU in disciplines directly tied to the state's evolving workforce needs. CSU graduates are the backbone of California's workforce. They're diverse, skilled, and ready to lead in every corner of the state, and it's no wonder the CSU tops national rankings for social mobility. We are the universities of choice for California's families seeking value, affordability, and excellent preparation for well-paying careers. 61% of our students have the full cost of their tuition covered, and the vast majority, 63% of our students, graduate with zero loan debt. I've long said that funds entrusted to the CSU are not an expenditure but an investment. Now we know with precision, with the return on the investment, what that looks like. Would you believe that for every dollar the state invests in the CSU, it is rewarded with a $7.69 return in statewide industry activity? Add in the earnings of our alumni across California, and the return on the $1 investment grows to more than $35. I challenge you to name any other investment that performs that well and that consistently, and that's just the beginning. So without further ado, I am pleased to invite Greg Sacks and thank him and his team, our Vice Chancellor for External Relations and Communication, to introduce today's presentation. Vice Chancellor Sacks.
Thank you so much, Chancellor Garcia. Before I start, I just want to remind all of our trustees that at their seat was a copy of the Economic Impact Report and also a few samples of the One Sheets that we've provided. You'll notice that on the One Sheet is a QR code to get to the website. So it is an honor to be here to continue this conversation about the extraordinary impact of the California State University, an impact that extends far beyond the bounds of our campuses into every community across the state. As you just heard, the CSU's story is one of transformation for students, for industry, and for California itself. Today, we'll take a closer look at that story through a new and comprehensive lens. As Chancellor Garcia noted, the 2025 Economic Impact Report represents the most detailed and data-rich assessment of the CSU's influence that's ever been conducted. Perhaps most importantly, the report shines a light on our students, the heart of our mission. It demonstrates how the CSU continues to build doors of opportunity, create pathways for upward mobility, and changes life trajectories for hundreds of thousands of Californians and their families every year. To produce this analysis, we were fortunate to again partner with ICF, a global public policy and research firm known for its rigorous analytics and deep understanding of higher education's role in economic vitality. Leading this effort once again is Eliza Johnston, ICF's Director of Public Policy. Eliza and her team worked very closely with the chancellor's office and campus leaders to examine the CSU's economic and societal footprint, applying advanced modeling, regional data, and new measures that capture the full scope of our impact. Eliza will walk us through the report's findings, explore how CSU campuses are powering California's economy, supporting its workforce, expanding opportunities for students, and advancing research that strengthens communities and drives innovation across our state. So with that, I turn it over to Eliza to share the findings of "Moving California Forward: The Economic Power of the CSU." The floor is yours.
Wonderful, thanks so much. Very excited to be back here today. As Greg said, we've had the opportunity to do this work with the CSU since 2010, and in fact, I have had the opportunity to do this work with the CSU since 2010. So very excited to be back here today. I'm going to start off with an overview of the project, really just to set the stage, although I think you've heard a bit about it already. So then I will jump into discussing both the methodology and the quantitative economic impacts, which is really the heart of this assessment, and then turn over to the broader CSU impacts on students, industry, and society, which I think we've heard in various forms already this afternoon, but I'd like to add some oomph to it. So without further ado, we'll jump in. Good. All right. Yeah, thank you. So as you all know, the CSU system generates broad and lasting value for the state of California. But to fully capture its impact, this report analyzes the CSU's contributions across four key dimensions. Economic impacts, which is your measurable economic value in the form of industry activity, job creation, and increased earnings. Student impacts, which is how you transform the lives through access to education, degree attainment, and pathways to social mobility. Industry impacts, how you strengthen California's industries by supplying the talented workforce of tomorrow. And then societal impacts. This is how the applied research at CSU campuses addresses California's most pressing challenges and impacts the communities in which your campuses reside. Taken together, these four dimensions provide a robust view of the CSU's role as a powerful engine of opportunity, equity, and well-being across California. The report includes a chapter on each of these dimensions, beginning with the economic impact analysis. So I'm going to spend a little bit, you can go to the next slide, thanks. I'm just going to spend a few minutes upfront talking about the methodology, the tool, and the process of the inputs, so that you have an understanding about where the numbers come from in the subsequent slides. ICF uses the INPLAN model. This is the most widely used and respected tool to conduct economic impact analysis. This is consistent with the previous studies that we've done for you, as well as many academic and other institutions across the country. INPLAN is an economic impact model that allows users to input region-specific inputs and trace and calculate the flow of dollars from those industries where the direct spending originates to supplier industries, which results in total economic impact. The chart on the right demonstrates the process that we use to develop and calibrate the model. As you can see, the analysis relies on model inputs related to CSU spending. We worked closely with the chancellor's office and campuses to review and refine these inputs so they accurately reflect the spending that is happening at your campuses and across the system. The data are then aligned with region-specific industry data in the INPLAN tool, so the data can account for regional supply chains and unique industry linkages across California. The model then calculates the various levels of impact that result in what your total impact is. The model produces results in terms of four common output metrics. Employment, which I think is self-explanatory, but these are the jobs that are supported by CSU's operations and spending. Labor income, which is the wages and salary that are paid to workers in industries supported by CSU-related spending. Industry activity, which is the total economy-wide spending generated across the sectors due to CSU activity. And then tax impact, and specifically, we're looking at state and local tax revenues from this economic impact. So as discussed, the economic impacts are driven by CSU spending, which includes operational expenditures, these are the salaries of CSU employees as well as supplies and other operating costs. CSU auxiliary expenditure, so this is spending that occurs on your on-campus bookstores and campus dining, foundation and research institutes. CSU capital expenditures, which includes primarily building maintenance and upkeep as well as software licenses or other equipment costs that may require annual or every few year update. And the CSU student spending, so this is the spending that students pay towards housing, food, transportation, and other living expenses. During the '23-'24 academic year, the CSU and its students spent over $20 billion directly in the California economy. Additionally, many CSU alumni remain in the state after graduation and contribute to the local economy. In 2024, alumni received $97.8 billion in incremental earnings due to their CSU degree. So again, this is the earnings that are tied to their CSU degree. That money, when spent in the local economy, further stimulates additional impacts. And so without further ado, here are the impacts. So the direct spending that I just discussed contributes to a very significant and impressive impact statewide across the four core spending categories. CSU-related spending supported over 210,000 jobs, $31.6 billion in industry activity, and $2.3 billion in state and local taxes across the state. As you can see from the chart, operational spending really stands out to drive your impact, which isn't surprising given what you do as an education institution. In addition, the impact generated by CSU's daily activity, sorry, in addition to the impact generated by CSU's daily activity, CSU also created significant value across the economy in terms of the earned differential of CSU alumni. This impact each year is contributed when CSU alumni spend their income in the state and supported in 2024 550,300 jobs and $114.5 billion in industry activity. That's the bottom line there you can see on the chart. And as the chancellor said, this can be articulated in terms of return on investment. The magnitudes alone are impressive, but when you look at it in terms of every dollar that the system receives from the state of California, the CSU generates $7.69 in statewide industry activity. It is an impressive return. And when you factor in the CSU alumni spending of their incremental earnings, that return grows to $35.53. Throughout the report, in addition to the statewide impact, we discuss how CSU campuses significantly boost the regional economies because of the goods and services they purchase in the communities where they're located. In the report, we focus on eight campus regions, but for today's discussion, I'm going to take a less granular look focusing on Northern, Central, and Southern California to give you a flavor of the regional impacts without being too repetitive. I encourage you all to resist the urge to compare impact across region because impact is really driven by the number of campuses, the size in terms of student population of those campuses, as well as the robustness of the regional economy. So this isn't really a comparison of one region's performance over the other. I also want to note that the return on investment is influenced by both the state investment as well as the size of the regional economy, so also try not to compare that. But in and of themselves, each region has a significant impact. Across the four core spending categories of CSU-related direct spending in Northern California, there were 62,000 jobs supported and $8.3 billion in industry activity. CSU alumni from campuses in the Northern Region had higher income attributed to their CSU degree totaling $36.1 billion, which supported $45.1 billion in industry activity. We see a similar pattern in the Central Region. With fewer campuses and smaller student bodies, those impacts are muted. Across the four spending categories, CSU-related direct spending from Central Region campuses supported over 52,000 jobs and $5.1 billion in industry activity. Again, when you include the CSU alumni from campuses in the Central Region and their higher income attributed to their CSU degree, there's a total income of $13.5 billion spent, which then supported $18.4 billion in industry activity. And then lastly, the Southern Region, as we all know, is home to many CSU campuses with robust student bodies. with robust student bodies. Across the four spending categories, CSU direct spending from Southern California campuses supported 121,500 jobs and $15.4 billion in industry activity. And again, when accounting for the alumni in the Southern Region, there's an additional $56.6 billion in industry activity. So that wraps up the discussion of the impact results quantitatively. Again, I encourage folks to look in the report for the more granular regional results, as well as the campus-specific results that are in the appendix. Now that we've discussed the tremendous value in terms of dollars of cents, I do want to spend a couple of minutes turning to the equally significant value of the CSU in terms of what you do, which is educate, and the impact that that has more broadly on the state of California in terms of students, industry, and societal impacts. At the heart, the CSU is an education system, and therefore, you impact the lives of the students you educate. And in a way, and in that way, CSU drives social mobility by broadening access and offering unmatched affordability. Here are some high-level talking points that you heard, but I think bear repeating. Over a third of CSU students are the first in their family to attend college. 61% of students pay no tuition, and the spring 2023 graduates, 63% of them finished debt-free. These are significant contributions to affordable education in California. Moreover, each year, you graduate career-ready workforce with the right skills. We hear time and again from industry leaders that hands-on experience is the most important qualification for job readiness, and 80% of your graduates have gotten hands-on experience while at CSU. They are ready to make an impact, not only in California's industries, but in terms of their own upward mobility. Again, bears repeating, across all sectors of the economy, CSU graduates roughly half of all undergraduate degrees across the state. A significant portion of industries are supported by CSU graduates coming out of your system every year, and over the past decade, CSU has graduated over a million bachelor's degree holders. In the report, we drill down into the state's key sectors, highlighting how CSU graduates supply the workforce for these sectors in California. Education has a huge workforce. There are over a million educators in California, and annually, the CSU graduates nearly 8,000 new teachers, offering different pathways to enhance accessibility to your students. Healthcare is another key sector, with over 3 million workers and nearly half a million open positions each year. CSU graduates over 55% of all healthcare graduates in the state, awarding 3,300 critical nursing degrees each year. California is known as the epicenter for media, culture, and design. The sector employs nearly half a million people, and even more impressively, generates over $202 billion in gross state product. The CSU awarded over 11,500 media, culture, and design degrees, and in 2024, CSU conferred 65% of the communication and journalism bachelor's degrees and 93% of the broadcast media degrees across the state. Engineering, including computer engineering, is a key sector in California, and yet again, a significant portion of graduates are coming from CSU. 53% of all of California's general engineering bachelor's degrees are CSU students. And finally, California is a worldwide tourism destination. 51% of all of California's hospitality graduates are coming from CSU, and 67% of all California hospitality bachelor's degrees are awarded at CSU. These are key sectors across the state that are relying heavily on the workforce provided by CSU. And finally, we looked at how CSU research helps drive California's economic growth, fuels innovation, and directly serves California communities. CSU research expenditures reached $981 million in 2324, an increase of nearly 50% since 2019. CSU's 10 multi-campus research collaboratives knit together faculty, students, and facilities across the regions of the state, transforming individual universities into an integrated statewide innovation network. Between 2019 and 2023, CSU faculty and students produced more than 43,000 peer-reviewed publications, book chapters, and creative works. And CSU's growing scholarly profile has reflected increased national recognition. 21 CSU campuses are now designated by the Carnegie Classification. But I think what's even more important is how the CSU's research impacts the communities where campuses are located. So in the final chapter of the report, we drilled down on six specific industries or issues that are facing California, and explained how CSU research is being marshall to impact these urgent challenges. The report highlights innovation and research in tech, biotechnology, energy and climate resilience, agriculture, water security, and marine resources. And through the telling of stories of students and research, we can explore how CSU has a significant impact on communities across the state. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Vice Chancellor Sacks for closing remarks.
Thank you very, very. Sorry. Thank you very, very much, Eliza. As we make, excuse me, as we share these findings with the public, our goal is simple, to make sure Californians, from students and families to legislative, business, and community leaders, understand how vital the CSU is to the state's success. This report is more than a collection of data points. It's a story of people, purpose, and progress. In line with this report, we're proud that we have launched the updated CSU Impact website, which is calstate.edu/impact. It can also be found if you use the QR code on the One Sheets, where you will, where you have the opportunity to explore the full report, see highlights by region, and learn how CSU campuses drive opportunity and innovation throughout California. Yeah, thanks. In the days and weeks ahead, we'll be sharing key findings and stories across our digital and social channels to help amplify this message statewide. We've also provided all of our universities with a campus toolkit, a resource ranging from sample press releases to specific messaging, to sample social media posts, that are designed to help them share their local and regional impact in ways that resonate with their, excuse me, with their unique communities. Throughout this coordinated effort, our goal is to celebrate the CSU's role in California, celebrate the role in California's most powerful engine of social mobility and economic growth, and to keep that message front and center throughout the year, if you don't mind. Lastly, I really want to extend special thanks to Shannon Matthews, who works in our division, the strategic communications and brand marketing team, and to our university colleagues across the CSU, who provided data, insight, and thoughtful review of the report's contents. I also really want to thank Lauren Ramos-Mendoza, who spent the better part of the year coordinating these efforts and expertly bringing the CSU story to life for all of California. The dedication and collaboration of this team ensured that the report truly reflects the collective strength and impact of our entire system. Thank you very much, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for this, and I am going to ask my colleagues to ask whatever questions they have, but I just want to say, this is just remarkable. My mother used to say, "It's a poor dog that won't wag its own tail." The CSU's never been a poor dog, but for some reason, this kind of data has never been assembled this way, at least when I've been on the board, and presented in this cohesive fashion. My, I hope in a future presentation, we can not only talk about this data, but talk more detail about how this data is being disseminated throughout the legislature, throughout decision-makers, throughout the state of California. Any trustees like to ask any questions? I see trustee Rodriguez. Okay, we'll go around, we'll go around, and trustee Adamson, did you want to say? Okay, trustee Rodriguez, you start.
Thank you so much, Chair. I just wanted to add to your comment about how impactful this is going to be, especially the way that you divided it up according to different regions. I can see that this information is going to be so key to share with our legislators, even our elected officials in our local areas, it's going to be crucial, and I just really appreciate the way that that was formulated. And I'm just excited. I'm excited to be able to be able to talk about this information with our elected officials and let us know how best to be able to use this tool, too. I think one thing that will be important is, you know, for those of us in our different sectors, is like, how do we communicate this information? I mean, this is absolutely incredible, but if there's even talking points that we can be able to share in all the different events and things that we represent in our local communities, that would be most helpful.
Thank you very much. In fact, that's part of the toolkit. And what's not included here is, we of course have similar economic impact information for every specific campus, so we were able to do campus, region, and then statewide. So we have all of that, which, and again, there's an intranet site for all of our campuses to be able to access. That includes sample talking points, press releases, you name it. And talking to a few presidents earlier today, it sounds like they've been able to get some use out of it already. And I know they have plans. Part of kind of our effort to get it out is, we talk about how they can connect with local chambers of commerce, workforce development boards, folks like that also. And we are going to do a presentation in Sacramento to legislators and their staffs.
I believe trustee Farado. There you go. Trustee, oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to you. Trustee Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Vice Chancellor Sacks, congratulations, and thank you for this work. In my seven-plus years on this board, we've had numbers thrown around at the top of people's head about our return, but nobody ever really quantified it that allowed us to really become advocates for it. And I can tell you, back in 2004, 2005, when I sat on this board, we didn't have this at all, anything like it. So I really, really appreciate it. This information is vital, not just with politicians. This is a tool for us to use with our alums, our donors, our industry partners. This is an investment that we need to talk to all of them about, and I believe that this is a tool that will allow us to get there, and I applaud you. Thank you for getting it to us. I look forward to using it, and I know that our alumni are all going to be encouraged by what they read in this as well, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Oh, yeah. Trustee Gialdutti.
Great, it was great report. You mentioned press releases. Are you going to proactively push us out? Because I think that's a great story in itself, if you can do that.
Yes, yes. We actually, most of the universities, if not all the universities, including the chancellor's office, have kept all of this embargoed, so today is the go day with all of this stuff. And so you'll notice social media posts, the press, everything's going out, actually, as we speak.
Trustee Melo.
Thank you so much, Chair Clark, and thank you, Vice Chancellor Sacks and Dr. Johnston, for this very comprehensive and informative report. Like my trustee colleagues, I was really pleased to read on page 15 and to see on your slide eight that the CSU's return on investment metrics, the $7.69 per dollar invested and the $35.53, including alumni earnings, was so impressive. I think that's a really good talking point that we can share with folks. I do have a couple of questions for you, and the question, first question is, how were the alumni earnings attributed specifically to the CSU educational attainment rather than general labor market data trends?
Great, thanks for asking that question. So again, we worked with individual campuses to get graduation statistics based on, you know, bachelor's degree, master's degree, and then we look at your, again, using your alumni information on likelihood of staying in state as opposed to migrating out of state, and then we look at the difference between, in the aggregate, so not specific to these individuals, but in the aggregate, the difference between earnings for an associate's degree, a high school degree, a bachelor's degree, and a master's degree, and then we look at the incremental difference between a graduate that came in with an associate's degree but left with the bachelor's, or came in with the bachelor's and left with the master's. And so we calculate that component of their earnings as attributed to the CSU, and then again, apply it to the number of graduates, and then apply that to the migration calculations.
Good to know, thank you. And my second question is a follow-up to trustee Adamson's question, is in terms of strategic relevance, you know, what partnerships, whether they be industry, regional, or philanthropic, will be prioritized to amplify our CSU system's statewide economic influence? How do we do that?
Thank you very much for bringing that up. And just to piggyback on what Chancellor Garcia mentioned earlier, related to CSU voices, so I encourage all of you to join that and be a part of that advocacy tool, because that's part of what's going to happen. That targets not only legislators, but other policymakers, kind of both at the federal and state level. And so part, when we go to Sacramento throughout this next legislative session, we'll be having these with us. We also have a set of influencers and friends in industry that we're sharing this with, so that they can make sure that they're passing it along with their, to those that they're engaged with. And then lastly, as part of our strategic engagement work, we're working with chambers and workforce investment boards, and those associations that are working not only with industry, but also with other county entities and whatnot, so that they can collectively be able to share this story. It's a matter of not only identifying and educating, but activating our ambassadors kind of across the board.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure.
Trustee Lopez.
Thank you. Like everybody else, I think this is great, very impressive. Thank you for doing this. I was struck by a couple of things, if I could. I think, one is, I think that the value of this report is obviously its entirety, but it really is regionalized. And by that, I mean that each of the regions really, really feel the economic impact up close and personal. And that's the constituency that you really want to mobilize everywhere. I mean, I've heard President Jimenez Andoval talk about the value of the CSU and making sure we say, but it's specific to Fresno, or San Jose, or whatever. I think there's real value to that, because I think statewide, it's great, but it kind of dilutes it. It makes it up close and personal when you regionalize it. The second reaction I had is, that's why it's so darn difficult to ever close a campus, right? Because it is so localized and so regionalized, all right? So, yeah, and so valuable. And then it made me think that any region that has a campus is going to fight it like heck, just like if they were losing every, any major employer in the region. So we need to understand that this is, this is a complicated set of issues, and how do we maximize the advocacy strategies for the value of the CSU, but at the same time, be aware that it can also at some point come back to be a real challenge. The last thing I'll say that I was struck by is, really valuable are the industry impacts in terms of our products. In other words, it's, you know, what is it, a million-plus educators, you know, half the engineers, whatever it is, by industry, those are the ones that really, really benefit from the CSU's, I hate to use this word, but output, you know, whatever. And in some ways, those are the ones that should be mobilizing, right? To make sure that we get funded, that we have the ability to produce, the engineers, the nurses, the healthcare professionals, the teachers, the civil servants, for crying out loud, that the state's going to need, right? And this begins to give us the tools to take that. So I'm going beyond the, this is great, I can see very, very specific ways in which this could really be helpful. Thank you.
So trustee Gialdutti, Laurie, you're going to get the last question, and not to put any pressure on you, but we're running three minutes behind, and so, you know, again, no pressure at all, just.
Well, I'll just make a statement then, which is, even as I was listening, sorry, I'm jet-lagged, so trying to keep my eyes open listening, but I- I'm jet-lagged, so trying to keep my eyes open listening, but I was thinking about our alumni donor interactions tomorrow, and which points I want to incorporate even into our statements so donors could hear. And that led me to also think, you know, I would never want to walk into a legislator's office without carrying one of these. I think they should be available to parents and families when they visit campuses, but I also started to think, this is, you know, expensive to print and put out, and is there a, you know, I'd also love to see at some point, a digest version of it, where it's just, you know, different audiences and the, the highlights of the economic impact and the impact, the economic impact to our families and the economic impact of the state, because I do think we could digest it in a form that's really easy to hand out, because we want everyone having this elevator pitch.
That's a great idea. We'll put together something that's a little more digestible, although on the website, there's a lot of that information as well. So thank you very much, Chair.
Vice Chancellor Sacks, thank you so much for that outstanding presentation. And at this time, we will now begin the business of our committees.
Oh, God.
Does anybody need a comfort break?
Yes.
Okay, well, we're going to take a five-minute comfort break before we start our committees.
With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. 6,700 service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans, and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. 6,700 service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans, and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually... Board of Trustees meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. 6,700 service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration...
convene the Committee on Governmental Relations.
I'm going to talk slowly as people start to walk back in.
I don't control it.
Thank you, Chair, so much. And will the Committee on Governmental Relations please come to order? I think we have form, yes. Before we begin, I wanted to highlight the National Native American Heritage Month. Thank you, Chair Clark. As you shared in your report, the Office of Tribal Relations led CSU's engagement at the 58th Annual California Native American Day and the Native American Heritage Month Parade, showcasing strong student participation, community connection, and the CSU's ongoing commitment to native visibility and partnership. A lot of gratitude, V.C. Sacks, to the team, to our Office of Tribal Relations for their work, just so much appreciation. I think Samantha is around. Yes, thank you so much for your work on that. And trustees, as you know, we provide an update on tribal relations and NAGPRA and Cal-NAGPRA compliance at each board meeting. For this board meeting, we have prepared a written report that is included in the agenda packet. And let us know, please, if you have any questions. In January, I'm very excited about a presentation with all of the positive progress that has been made in the past year. And so I'm, I'm really looking forward to that presentation. I also want to acknowledge that we have, from our different stakeholders, really shared about the impacts that, from the federal level, from the state level, that is really impacting our, our different faculty, our staff, our students. And I want to thank you, all three of you, and our alumni, too, for saying, hey, we are going to be standing together to advocate on these issues. I want to thank Chair Boyd for presenting to the different hearings that she's been at. I definitely want to tell you, President Adrahani, that we are in partnership with you. We want to definitely work with you together. I can't tell you how important it is to have student voices on this issue. So thank you so much for saying that collective action matters, because it absolutely does. I really appreciate that. And Alumni Council President Harrell, you've also said time and time again how you want to stand with us and advocate, not just at the state level, but also in the different districts. So I really appreciate your partnership in that, too. I do want to mention, too, that we attended, along with our, our chancellor, we attended the Congressional Hispanic Caucus Institute in September. And President Jimenez Andoval and President Anjente Manson attended, which was crucial for us to make sure that we gave voice on federal issues and how it impacts our different campuses. So I just want to thank our presidents. I alongside them with our Federal Relations Office, met with several, several different electeds and shared our concerns. So we have to keep on doing that and be vocal. So it is now time for the committee to consider today's consent agenda. Would any committee member wish to remove any of the items for separate discussion? Okay. May I have a motion to approve all the items listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify. Thank you, again. Any opposed, abstentions? Let's see, the items listed on the consent agenda are approved. And Chair Clark, I think that's the fastest government relations meeting I have ever had. This concludes the business of the committee.
Outstanding work, trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Furstenberg, will you please convene the Committee on Organization and Rules?
Thank you, Chair Clark. Will the Committee on Organization and Rules please come to order? It's time for the committee to consider today's consent agenda, consisting of two items. The first is approval of the minutes from the May 25 board meeting. The second is an information item for the proposed Board of Trustees meeting dates for 2027. This item will come back to us in January 2026 for final approval. But it does have some changes in the model for the approve, from the approved 2026 board meeting dates. The May meeting dates are proposed for earlier in the month to avoid the conflicts with CSU's spring commencement schedule across the system and accommodate full trustee engagement and participation in commencement activities, which you know I love. And I think that will make a big difference. As has occurred in prior years, due to the timing of elections and federal holidays, Veterans Day and Thanksgiving in November, the November proposed meeting dates occur in the same week as the UC Regents, which is always avoided. All other proposed meeting dates occur around the same time during the month in which trustees typically meet. The proposed 2026 meeting dates have been vetted by general counsel, reviewed by the chancellor, the board chair, and Organization and Rules Chair and Vice Chair, and should not conflict with any major federal or religious holidays or our system counterparts meetings, except for the November dates, as previously noted. Again, this item will come back to us at the January 26 board meeting for final approval of the 2027 meeting dates. Are there any objections to the approval of the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. And that concludes the business of the Committee on Organization and Rules. And I wasn't trying to compete in any way, but I think we did damn well.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Furstenberg. Trustee Lopez, will you please convene the Committee on Finance?
Thank you, Chair Clark. Will the meeting of the Committee on Finance please come to order? It's now time to consider the consent agenda. There are two items. Does any committee member wish to remove an item for separate discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve all the items listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any, all in favor, say aye.
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 All, any abstentions, any nays? All right. The consent agenda is passed. We have one discussion item. The information, the item is an information item regarding the CSU's annual investment report. And this item is going to be presented by Executive Vice President, Vice Chancellor Patrick Lenz, and Assistant Vice Chancellor Robert Eaton.
Well, thank you, trustee Lopez. This item presents the CSU's annual investment report for the year and June 30, 2025. Investment reports to the Board of Trustees are part of the broader objective of ensuring that the CSU cash is invested prudently and until such time as it is needed to meet system-wide and individual university objectives. During today's presentation, we will provide you a summary of the investment performance as of June 30, 2025. And we will also share with you this year's annual distribution of earnings from the total return portfolio back to the system. Going forward, subject to any specific actions requested by the board, we will continue to manage and monitor investment performance, make adjustments to the portfolio, portfolios as needed, and report regularly to the board. Now let me turn to the presentation, turn the presentation over to Assistant Vice Chancellor for Finance, Treasury, and Risk Management, Robert Eaton.
Thank you, Executive Vice Chancellor Lenz, and good afternoon, trustees. This annual investment report is presented to you each November following a period of time to compile the portfolio value and performance data, and then allowing for a review by the, of the data by the CSU's Investment Advisory Committee at its October meeting each year. So let me begin our report with a reminder that CSU investments are comprised of the cash associated with various operating activities of the CSU, which includes our core educational activities, as well as enterprise activities, such as student housing, parking, continuing ed, and the like. This is cash of the CSU only, and does not include cash of our auxiliaries. And as of June 30, 2025, approximately $6.6 billion of CSU cash was invested in our three main portfolios. That's comprised of about $2 billion in the liquidity portfolio, $1.4 billion in the intermediate duration portfolio, and $3.2 billion in the total return portfolio. The table also shows the investment performance and benchmark return for our three main portfolios for the 12 months ended June 30, 2025. And as you see, our portfolios performed well over that 12-month period. But as I've shared with you in previous investment reports, our portfolios are designed to provide value over the long term. And from that perspective, our portfolios have also continued to perform well. That long-term data is in your written agenda item. And those portfolios are still well-positioned to continue providing value well into the future. Now, as an example, if we can go to the next slide, please. As an example of that performance and the value that our investment portfolios provide to the system, here we have the history of the earnings distributions from the total return portfolio to our universities. And I'm pleased to report that at their October 2025 meeting, the CSU Investment Advisory Committee approved another distribution of total return portfolio earnings back to the system. This year, the amount is $125.6 million, which brings total distribution of earnings from that portfolio over the last seven years to $439 million. So with that, I'd like to turn the presentation back over to Executive Vice Chancellor Lenz for closing comments.
Thank you, A.B.C. Eaton. The success of the total return portfolio has yielded additional revenue for campuses that is dedicated exclusively to funding critical deferred maintenance. And as you can see from this slide, we've had a dramatic increase in just a very short period of time, over two years, to, to address those critical deferred maintenance needs. In addition to distributing the $126 million in the total return portfolio earnings to the campuses, we have also recently distributed another $169 million to the campuses in investment earnings from our other investment portfolio, bringing total investment earnings distributed back to the campuses there to just under $295 million. I want to extend my thanks to trustee McGroy, who chairs our Investment Advisory Committee, and the members of the committee for their leadership and wise stewardship of these important resources. Trustee Lopez, that concludes our presentation, and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you both for that presentation. Are there questions? Trustee Melikar.
Thank you, trustee Lopez. And thank you so much, A.B.C. Lenz and A.B.C. Eaton. I really appreciate your report. You know, the CSU's diversified structure, the liquidity, intermediate duration, and total return portfolios balances, the flexibility with long-term growth in a really positive way. But I have two questions for you, and that is, what mechanisms ensure equitable campus distribution and oversight of the TRP-funded capital projects?
I'd turn to A.B.C. Eaton.
Yeah, so the distribution of earnings is based on a pro-rata share that is determined by the amount that has been invested by each campus. So to the extent that they have assets in that portfolio, then they get a pro-rata share of that earnings as well. So that's how we determine that it's allocated equitably amongst the campuses.
I understand. Thank you for that explanation. And could a portion of the future TRP earnings be reserved for emergency system-wide stabilization? I mean, given the... I mean, given the fiscal unpredictability that's going on?
Yeah, unfortunately, no, because the legislation and the statute that created our ability to invest in these kinds of securities stipulated that they can only, the earnings can only be used for one-time capital expenditures. And that was a guardrail designed by the legislature to ensure that these earnings were not relied upon for ongoing operations and therefore created a problem for us down the road if those went down. So unfortunately, the statute limits what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Arambula?
Anytime we see those really big numbers and all of those investments added up to $6.6 billion, we continue to hear questions of, well, why don't you just use that $6.6 billion to pay for some of the immediate needs? You mentioned this already, but would you mind speaking to it again? What portion of that $6.6 billion are we, if this board so chose, could we pull down to use toward other means?
Well, I think as we shared before, for example, when we do our presentation on the annual financial statements, right, and we talk about, the $6.6 billion, a lot of that is spoken for with respect to, for example, short-term obligations that we have, right? And so I think we've shared with you in the past how we kind of break that down. And we basically get to a number that is really kind of what we call the reserves, which is the $760 million, which we've presented in the past. That's really kind of the number that we have, if you will, that would allow for some kind of discretion if we needed to draw upon that.
Thank you. And so I just really want to hammer that point home. Whenever any of our partners are looking at that number, even if we wanted to, that $6.6 billion roughly is actually around $700 and some odd million that we could pull on in one-time reserves. Everything else is already spoken for with an associated cost that we have committed to.
Yeah, and to clarify further, when I say spoken for, it's not just by policy. A lot of it is spoken for by statute. So I want to be clear on that point as well.
And if I could add to that, a lot of that money, to build on the answer to Trustee Yemelikar, is in the campuses. It's not held here in the chancellor's office. It's not like our money. It is, the campuses have pulled that in and we're investing it as a collective. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's not, it's not like we have a pot of money that we can just take and do something with. Chair Clark?
Thank you for that clarification. And in light of that, and I'm not going to put you on the spot today, but at a future board meeting, and I don't think it would take much time, if you could explain to the Board publicly what the restraints are in terms of that money. Even in my region, I hear all the time, they're sitting on $7 billion. They should be doing different things. I think it's a good thing if we speak publicly about what those restraints are. Again, not today, but at a future meeting, I think that would be very useful.
We can certainly do that, yes.
Any other questions?
Trustee Lopez?
Oh.
Just a quick one on the true rainy day reserve, which is the $760 million that Robert referred to. That's about 32 days of running room. We have a trustee, a board-approved policy, that that rainy day reserve will be three to six months. So we're in violation of our own policy. And this is an issue that's very important in terms of the overall financial health of the system. Rating agencies, people who look at us, they look at what we've actually done in terms of rainy day reserve. If anything, we should be parking more money in that reserve. And I just want to point out that, but the TRP was really an effort that came out of the Board of Trustees to have that total return portfolio. Peter Taylor led the charge on that, to create it. If you just look at this year's report, we earned $180 million more in the portfolio by having the TRP in existence to get to that 12% return. So it was a major move forward, and the legislature has backed it, supported it, and, but it did come out of the Board of Trustees.
Chair Clark?
Just a real quick comment. Trustee McGory's point, and he's made that several times before, but I think it really should be underscored. People hear $700 and some odd million, and they think, my God, that could, that could run us for years. It's 30 days. And when you come back to us to kind of lay out with more specificity what compose, what these funds are composed of, please remind us of the magnitude of this institution, the extent. This is, this is not even just one university campus. There's nothing like it in the United States. And please try to help us appreciate just the magnitude of this institution.
We will do that, Chair Clark.
Just one more follow-up question to Trustee McGory's point. I mean, do we have a point of view, if we're in violation of our own policy regarding the paucity of the rainy day fund, is that prudent? Is that acceptable? Is that more prudent than the money not going to the delayed capital expenditures? Like, it would be helpful to, to, you know, I don't want to just flippantly say we're, you know, we don't have, we have 30 days running time. So I think it would be helpful to better understand that.
So it is a tough balance here, because you have to think about the fiscal climate that we're in right now. The campus, first of all, Robert was actually right on the total return portfolio. By statute, we have to allocate that money for deferred maintenance. But even $126 million, which might seem like a large number, is not in relationship to our deferred maintenance needs and campus desperately need it. And we're going to be outlining that for you tomorrow when we do our capital report. $760 million, not a lot of money, and, you know, we, we do need to be prepared in the event that we have some kind of crisis, where we really are going to need that revenue to get us by the next fiscal year. So I have very serious concerns about the state's ability to invest in us over the next two years, given both what's happening at the federal level and, as I mentioned before, the state's fiscal condition. And, you know, we really need to be prepared for that.
If there are no others, before I close the committee, I just want to bring to your attention that you have this, which is the operating budget plan that we submitted to the legislature. And I would keep it handy, because when the, when the governor's budget comes out, this, this is what we asked for. And you can compare to what the governor is proposing for us, and then ultimately, you know, but this, this is the foundational document for us. So I just wanted to point out that you have it at your seats. So with that, Chair Clark concludes the business of the Finance Committee.
Once again, masterfully done, Trustee Lopez. And does anybody want to stay here longer? This has been such a great day. If not, this concludes today's business. The Board will reconvene tomorrow morning promptly at 8:30 in the Dumkey. And again, please be prompt. We have a full calendar, and it's our last day of meeting. See you all tomorrow.
...in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. 6,700 service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. 6,700 service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. 6,700 service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations. 6,700 service members and veterans, along with 13,000 dependents, are pursuing their academic dreams at the CSU. Military-related students receive special admissions consideration, priority registration, and academic credit for military courses and experience. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. We honor our veterans today and every day. Each CSU campus has a Veterans Success Center, and financial assistance, mentoring, and counseling are available. Veterans are honored through campus activities such as flag ceremonies, Veterans Appreciation Month, or special stoles worn at commencement. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU's Director of Veteran Affairs, Marshall Thomas, received the Higher Ed Military Spotlight Award this year for shaping policies and programs that directly benefit student veterans. The CSU again swept the top three spots in U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2026 Best Colleges for Veterans and occupied three others in the top 10. Veterans, thank you for your valor, discipline, and importantly, your service to the country. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU is the nation's largest four-year public university, educating more than 460,000 students throughout California. With tuition of less than $7,000 annually for an undergraduate, a CSU degree is an amazing value. Welcome to the live stream of the California State University Board of Trustees Meeting. Please adjust your audio as needed. The CSU provides a pathway to success for many students, including those from historically underrepresented backgrounds, our first generation, or who have military affiliations.